All right, so we're gonna begin again. Begin again. And we'll start with Mary Suwicky.
Nope, sorry.
Hi, Mary.
Hi. Okay, Mary Suwicky, Director of Health and Human Services. And the first thing I'd like to address is an email that was sent to me where there was a question about that there were hundreds of people left in the campsites in Calaveras County. I'd like to tell you that we sent some workers out to check. And party is closed, there's no one camping there. Comanche reports that all evacuees have checked out. Hogan, there was just one family that was there, and they are not there due to the Butte Fire. So there aren't. That report apparently is false. We did check with Common Grounds this week, that as they originally had received $10,000 to house seniors and disabled due to the Butte Fire in hotels, motels, and apartments. There are eight people left of the 34 originally placed. They are checking with them this week, and so we will see after they check with them, because Kathy Topol was gone, how much money they have left and what the status is on the eight remaining. So I'll have that for you probably sometime next week. She expected a report hopefully to be completed by tomorrow. In the area of the Community Development Block Grant, we have been notified by our consultants now that the state would like us to have a public hearing that we have, we will be placing on the board's agenda for November 10th, that the $93,000 that was originally scheduled for the West Point affordability housing study, that those funds can now be utilized for the Butte Fire victims. We could use that for things like some well hookups, et cetera, where we estimate we could even do like up to 10 or 11 wells or other kinds of costs where that may not be covered by other things. So that will be coming to you as to your decision to switch that money over on November 10th. I also would like you to know that we will be, as you know, we've been having the public hearings, and on the Community Development Block Grant, we can ask for the funding for that same study in the 1617 application, so it's not as if it will be not happening, it's just going to go into the next application. So it's just a delay, and I have talked to Supervisor Wright, and he's fine with that issue, unless he's changed his mind since our last discussion. Okay. So also, the county may apply for some grant assistance with some home replacement or renovation costs in the 1617 funds, application for upward of anywhere between 600 and 700,000. So that also will be in the application coming to you for your consideration through the Community Development Block Grant, and that's also coming up very shortly. So you have a number of decision-making processes coming up on that issue. In the area of mental health, the CCP grant is close to completion now and is scheduled to come to the Board of Supervisors also very shortly. This would provide funding of $112,000 for three crisis workers, one lead workers, fiscal and administrative support, phones, and other expenses that staff normally incur. It can be renewed up to nine months as needed. These would be workers that would be used exclusively for the Butte Fire area, for crisis intervention. In addition, our Behavioral Health Department are offering workshops, it's called Mental Health 101 Awareness, at the Veterans Memorial Hall in West Point on October 29th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. in Mountain Ranch, at the community hall, October 19th and 20th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. In addition, behavioral health staff will begin to be present at our outstations in Mountain Ranch on Thursdays and Fridays, River Flats on Wednesdays, and it will continue in West Point during their regular set days that they already are there. Under the local assistance, we have two workers ever since the Butte Fire was put out and we were able to start going back out, who took the list of people who are in the, who were in the shelters and the campgrounds, and they started with those, with the Mountain Ranch addresses, and also have been working some of the other areas as well, but took those initially to start seeing how people have fared since returning to their home. And they have seen 100, they have attempted to see 114 addresses so far. 54 homes were verified as okay. They gave out two gift cards left for tools and some food replacement. 37 residences, they were unable to locate or get past the locks. They attempted calls on all available homes with phones, and they are starting to hear back now on some of those, and I'll have some more information by the next report. 24 of those homes were lost, and one of the individuals would like a trailer brought to the property. They distributed seven food boxes, hygiene supplies, tools, and water at all the residents where someone was present. The outstations, the contacts, since the, they were, the fire has succeeded, and we were able to reopen the outstations in River Flats. There's been 11 contacts. In West Point, they've seen 112 people, and in Mountain Ranch, there's been 51 people that have come in. In each of those areas, there is not just information about our services, but all of the information that was available at the local assistance centers that was possible to gain and bring up to the areas. Under the donation management area, the VOAD group met yesterday, and so I should have a report from them by the next meeting, because I was in a different meeting, you can't be two places at once. There is a meeting scheduled with the churches and nonprofits on October 21st at 9:00 a.m. in our building. This is for the foundation, at a request of the foundations and the funders of those, what it is, is those agencies and groups who have provided services for the Butte Fire, people have been asking for some recommendations of who to give some funding to. It's not county funds, they just want to know who actually provided services and who we might recommend that they provide funds to cover some of the costs that were incurred. So we're having that meeting to find out who did what, who hasn't received funding yet, and who we might give some recommendations to. So that's strictly about that issue. Then, under Disaster Calfesh, which is the old food stamp program, there were 35 applicants. The benefits issued were 9,799. We replaced masks, we had a mask replacement of 792 households. The amount came to $100,465. We now have the FEMA list of properties that were destroyed, damaged, and we are looking at our various websites that we have of clients, both in behavioral health, public welfare, and veterans, and we are trying to look to see that those who may not have been able to, or who have applied so far to FEMA, to see if perhaps there's a reason, and we will see if perhaps those individuals might want to go and apply for FEMA now. There might have been a reason perhaps that they might not have been able to do so. For example, many of our clients are disabled for a variety of reasons, and we will see if there's some way we can encourage or assist them in that process. And that's the end of my report for present.
Thank you for that information, Mary, and the work you guys are doing. It's a big progress, process. And that was one of the key questions I had for you was the, you know, how are you, you know, when you mentioned that you're cross-referencing those, that FEMA list, how are you going about determining? Are you, do you have staff calling, or, I mean, how do you do that?
We actually got the list of properties that they had, and then we are taking a look at the addresses that are there. We are then taking a look at our addresses, you know, because we, in that area, and then cross-referencing those to see if that person has applied, or that address has actually applied into the FEMA system or not, and then we're going from there.
So if somebody has applied for it, you're not following up with them at this point?
Well, then we know somebody in that household has applied.
Right. And so, so you're not contacting them right now. Mainly what I would like to see happen, and I would like to see a lot of things happen that are just impossible.
Yeah, I know.
So, and this might be one of them. But I would like to see each of those people, especially the 575 who have already signed their write-of-entry forms, to be contacted by the county and asked, you know, you know, how can we help? Because I think, you know, that outreach would really go a long way to getting some of the gaps. And I realize that, you know, even if it's the 575, that is a lot of calling or, you know, tracking down people. But I'm wondering, is that logistically possible for your department to do? It sounds like you're kind of doing a part of that.
We're actually doing many different things. We're doing the, the people who are going out and actually visiting all of the, you know, like I said, all the people who were in the shelters and in the campsites, and we had those, that we knew that they were in there.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Okay? And we're also encouraging, we have all of Jason's information, like about encouraging people to go out and sign off for the property. We have all about, all the information about the toxic waste, you know, and the metals, et cetera. We have all of that information there. And that's, we've done that since day one. We've worked together as a group, you need to know, the departments do work as a group. So we've been doing that. In addition, we have all of that information in all of the outstations and have been doing that. And so that, we have that. In addition, we are now also taking a look to see though, who hasn't applied for FEMA, because that can bring people some more information about benefits that they could be eligible for, especially because they may be the group that may not be insured because they're low-income. And so that's the next thing that we're attacking. And so that is what we're doing, and we're doing it from several different databases, because somebody may only be in one database and not necessarily in another database. And so that's what we're doing on that. And I know you would like everything perfect, but it's the best I think we can do. I have literally half the eligibility staff right now and half the social service staff. And I think, given that and the fact that the Affordable Care Act is opening up November 1st, it's the best we can do. And I think, when you look at the numbers, I think when, we've already hit like 140, just the two out on, in the pickup truck, already hit 114 properties. I think that's pretty good for just, what, a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
And they're back out, and we have all of the, and then you take a look at some of the numbers, you add them all together, I think we're doing pretty well.
Mary, how are we advertising or getting the word out on the, the mental health workshops that are in West Point, Mountain Ranch, and so have you?
We use the PI person, and that has been going out. We also have been using the local community groups as well, working there. And the outstations, you name it, we've also put it out to our fellow county departments. We also use it with, each group department has shared our lists with each other, with the churches, et cetera. Yeah.
Thank you, and thanks for your efforts, calling your department.
Question. Mary, are you with the FEMA, do you have a number of who is in temporary housing, or is that kind of a FEMA number that they're working through?
I would think that's probably with FEMA. It was only recently that we got the list, and that we're just starting. I have two people working on that right now, on the databases.
Okay.
And what we, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that, we do know that for the temporary housing, the very short term, there were seven families that had applied and were seen through that. I don't know about the number of temporary, the longer-term rental assistance, that type thing, but what we did here on Friday morning was that five families have been identified for modulars, once the properties are clean, and that FEMA can contract with the hauling and installing and permitting.
Okay.
But they, those applications are all through FEMA.
And we also are getting a report now from the State Department of Social Services about those who get the maximum amount of FEMA grant, who are then eligible for their additional grant. So we are getting those reports as well.
And additionally, FEMA, I believe that Brian emailed this out to the board, it was a summary report, and FEMA has committed to getting that to us on a regular basis that we can forward it to the board.
Mary, good job. Couple of quick questions. You mentioned we had eight people housed right now?
Common Grounds has eight senior and disabled left in their original 34.
Are they located in San Andreas, or the group up in Arnold, do you know?
They actually went in various locations. I know that Kathy placed some people, for example, as far as Modesto, et cetera, wherever she could get a spot at that time.
Okay.
And that's what she's getting me a report on now.
Yeah, there was eight people up there originally, and I wanted to say many people. It must be a nightmare tracking all the dollars spent for what we're doing as a result of the fire versus what we're doing as a result of a county and our normal operations. Are we tracking that somehow? I know we must be.
That's why we had this discussion yesterday in the meeting that I was at, is that the foundation has been tracking their, the funding that they receive, and we have not been receiving funding purposely internally to give out, because that would be a major issue. We recommend that the foundation, who is a volunteer group, go ahead and take care of those issues. I do know that, and so we only track our own expenses that we did, and the other organizations are tracking their expenses, and that's why they're spending a variety of meetings to look at, like we're having tomorrow, who has been providing what services, where are they getting some of their funding from, or if they're not getting funding and they have expenses, you know, perhaps we could make a recommendation to someone who has said, you know, we have some money to give, and it's for, like, medical, which is one area I've been asked to give some recommendations for. Then I'll say, okay, here's somebody who's provided some medical services. You can make a decision, but here is a group that has during the Butte Fire. You may want to talk with them further, and they may meet your criteria. You know, it's just to give some recommendations. I'm not going to tell people what to do and where to place their money. I'm just going to say, here are some recommendations.
And as far as county cost go, it's, the board recalls, back at the beginning, the Auditor's Office set up a specific fund, and all county departments are tracking their costs, and they're charging it to that fund. There is a meeting last week in October that will go through the claiming processes for federal and state funding, and all participating agencies, entities, nonprofits are invited to that meeting. I believe the email went out, or to all of those that we had on our list, and I believe we, at Chair Hudson's request, we even sent the list to him, so if he, if they, or, and Brian's here, possibly to all the board to ensure that we captured everybody that could claim under those, the FEMA and state funding, and they're invited to that meeting to understand how they can go about claiming reimbursement of their cost.
Thank you, Steve, Brian.
So I'd just like to say something about that. To qualify for those costs, the cost for them to get their money back, basically, those nonprofits would have had to be, as the FEMA and U.S. folks said, it would have had to been asked by the county to be a part of that whole response. And just not too many of them that were.
No, there were, there were a few.
A few?
Yes.
But there was a lot of folks out there that, that did, and thank goodness, because there were so many people coming out of District 2 and District 1, that it was, it would have been virtually impossible, I think, for us to even consider reacting to that in a, in a way that was actually reacted to. So, I mean, it's just one of those things where, I mean, who's going to be ready for something like that, you know? So, you know, I would suggest that, that we try to figure out some kind of a process where we determine that these, you know, as far as I'm concerned, every one of those nonprofits that responded did so for the people of Calaveras County and to help them. And so I would sure hate for any of those folks to not qualify after giving so much.
The purpose of the meeting tomorrow is to try and see what we can do to get as many people's bills paid as possible, one way or the other. Other questions?
I do want to say on the mental health workshops that I see, I do see where there's a 24-hour hotline as well.
Yes.
And that's being promoted too, as I see, for folks to call. So when they're calling, are there being offered additional resources as well? I mean, it's kind of the information line?
Yeah. And what I had here is only just a startup.
Right.
We're still looking at more and what else we need to do. This is just the startup. Because on issues of depression, and as you know, on issues of trauma, it goes much further.
Right.
Because as people realize the loss, it hits at various times, much longer. It takes a while to get over shock.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
The Ranteria, is there, you know, that was a huge evacuation point for most people who weren't affected by the fire, but there were some there.
Yes.
Have you talked to them at all?
I have not talked to them since the night we were up there. Because that was primarily a Red Cross site, and I've just only talked to the Red Cross briefly since that time on, on, and they were...
I always wondered if there's still people up there.
To my knowledge, there wasn't.
Okay. Thanks.
So one of the things that also that I've noticed is, you know, I get a bunch of these folks that come into my restaurant to eat. There's some pretty, there's some people that are pretty much trying to figure out how to take the next step, and they're confused, very confused, a lot of them. They're trying to figure out where to go next. I talked to several folks that just, just talking with their insurance companies was almost too much for them. And, you know, then you say, hey, well, come on over here to sign up for FEMA. And we're, you know, we're not talking about, we're talking about people that are in their mid-60s maybe, you know, late, you know, late 60s, that have just lost everything they ever worked for in their whole life or ever had. And they're, they're having a hard time walking through this process, very hard time. And there are a lot of folks up there that are not contacting us. They won't. And, you know, reach out and touch them, it's going to be hard to do anyhow. But usually, and I talked to somebody at FEMA, he said usually, they'll come out just about the time FEMA's ready to leave, you know, because it takes time for everything to start rolling again. And, which is unfortunate in a lot of cases, I believe, you know, it's, but it's one of those things I think we're going to have to be prepared for.
This is my fifth or sixth disaster I've worked. This is the worst one, of course, and it's not unusual, like I said, for people. They come in different, because people have different reactions. And I've had people come much, much later to finally come in and begin to talk about issues. We certainly can look at asking, for examples, our area agency on aging to come and do some senior insurance counseling, to see if they have something for the housing piece. If not, we can certainly look at seeing if we can't figure out something to do with that. But in general, you know, we're, we are Health and Human Services, we'll always figure out something, and certainly send people to us, even if we have half-staffed, we'll always figure out something. I can't remember a time we haven't. Supervisor Ponti certainly knows that. And so, you know, I just want people to come, and if they will talk with us, we'll just try and figure out the best we can. That's all I can say.
So part of your...
But I can't figure out everything for everyone, probably.
But I do think we should contact each person who's lost their place that has signed the 575. I mean, we have a, you know, that, not just your office, maybe, but the, you know, the county.
And I didn't say that we weren't. I said we got to 114 so far.
Good.
Okay. I'm just saying.
But you didn't say you were going.
I didn't say I wasn't going to. I said we got to 114 so far.
That's what I want to hear, is yes, we are going.
I think we have the largest number of anybody you've heard so far today, so give me a break.
Well, Jason contacted 575. That's what I'm saying, is that we have the, we've already made the contact, right? They've signed the paper. So why don't we start with that as the goal, is to try to contact all the county offices, try to contact the 575 people that have signed that paper, so we can make sure that they're getting the help they need.
But to do what? What would you like me to do with this?
To call them up and say, hi, I'm here with the county, and, you know, you realize you've signed this write-in reform, realize you lost your house, you know, we just want to make sure that things are going okay for you in this, in this time of disaster, have you, you know, do you need additional help from the county?
Okay. I will tell you this, I looked at some of the FEMA list the other day, and a number of those folks who lost some of those homes are out of the county. They are not in Calaveras County, so they would not be at the top of my list right now, because we also have our day job to do in addition, and as you heard this morning, there are people still wanting certain things. And we are, we do have people, I mean, I still have child abuse, elder abuse, and a number of other things to do as well, and so I have to get to those things as well. I'm just being realistic about it.
Sure.
So we will be getting to as many people as possible as quick as we can, that, I can guarantee you that. But also, I will tell you this, we have tried calling some people, but realistically, you know as well as I do, more than anybody else, Supervisor Wright, some of those phones are non-existent, and the phone lines are non-existent right now. And until, I mean, you can't say call them, because it's just not there.
Well, yeah. And that's...
And that has been, if it was that easy, I probably would be done by now.
Yeah, I understand that, but, I mean, we, I'm just saying that we have, and it's probably not your, it's, whatever.
I'm just saying, it's very difficult, because I've had people say to me, and ask my department, why don't you just call people?
Right.
And we can't, because the phone line isn't there on those properties that are destroyed, many of them.
Yeah.
And many of the people who live in areas that didn't have their property destroyed...
I know their phones are gone.
Their phones are still not.
Yeah.
They may have their home, but they don't have a phone.
Yeah.
And that is for many of our elderly and disabled. And I'm getting those calls, and people are coming to say, you need to do something about that as well. And my issue is like, what would you like me to do? I can't... I, I can't address that issue. It's beyond my control. And I wish it was in my control, truthfully.
Do you also, you guys have a warehouse over there too, or is that not yours?
We, we worked that out initially with Kelly Figaro, and we are continuing to work. She's on my list of calls this afternoon.
Okay. Is there resources to be able to go in there and help them?
I need to find out what the status is right now with Kelly and with Ms. Johnson.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you ever get to act on the, the Red Cross person that, that, the Red Cross said that they would provide to?
I got the information to the Red Cross, and I have heard back, they wanted to connect with me. The gentleman is traveling to Washington this week, so I emailed him and suggested that we have that phone conversation on Monday.
Yes, Supervisor Raiti.
Never mind.
I'd be more than happy to talk with you further, anytime.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
Any public comments?
Yes.
I'm glad we have a staff, if I recall, a couple of weeks ago, that was stated in here, that budget or whatever, the grant was approved, any and all emergencies, they were prepared. You judge it. Any and all emergencies was stated in here that they were ready to go. There's a number of donations coming from all the way from Modesto, middle of the night, because they've worked in the day. I believe that some money was bought up, some goods were bought up from Discovery Bay. It wasn't done because they wanted to be reimbursed. So I think there's those folks who were running those organizations like in person, I guess kind of drafted over there, but they just did it. Some people just did it, okay? Another thing I'd like to point out, that sometime they're having a problem, what to do with all those, well, first of all, there was another folks that was hard to place. Now let me remind you, in this county, you have a fucking bunch of empty buildings right in this town, old office buildings. Old office building called CCWD, it's empty. And I believe that you have a list of facilities that the county owns. Because I kind of, I don't like to get emotional, you know, but when I had to give a little radio to a lady, so she can call me when she had to do something, you go in there because she could not stand up, middle of the night, hey, folks, if you were ready for any and all emergencies, you know, we as people in this county that are pretty piss poor job, and I don't care who else is involved, your staff, if you want to take it personal, that's fine. You have a shitload of, a mental health specialist on this, on our payroll.
Peter, Peter, you gotta watch the language.
Okay, manure load of mental health. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I have a problem with English language.
I understand, I understand.
But, okay, manure load of mental health specialist. Wouldn't it be nice if we make use of it? They were, you're paying them for standby. Maybe they can get their body down here and help those folks, because that's what they need. You know, it breaks my heart when I say, hey, you got a nice dog with it, guy. Oh, what's nice about it? I just lost four kids. Cal Fire wouldn't even dose my dog down. So some of those folks need some mental health specialists, the ones you're paying for a standby. Let them earn their keep, folks. That's in you, you know, you are creating the budget, let them get down there. Somehow, some kind of correlation, when you need evacuation, you have Public Works, you have a bunch of buses. I'm sure you could put a good use to it, right? So all I gotta say is, folks, hopefully, you can learn how it could be improved, how it could be improved coordinating it. Everybody wants to do good, everybody wants to do right, bless their hearts, I want to thank them. But, you know, it breaks your heart when, you know, a guy all broken down because he lost a family, there was no communication there, somebody who cannot get up because they're stuck in a tent, when you got empty buildings over here, not this one. I'm talking about other buildings around this county, what you own, and I'm sure you have a list. So please, hopefully we can learn some lesson and get some improvements. I'm not faulting anybody, but please, we got asset that was not utilized the way it should been or could been. Thank you.
You gotta go to CCWD, right?
Who?
You're going to CCWD now, right?
Right now.
Just letting you know.
Oh, don't worry.
I told you coming down, Peter.
They got the nicest warehouse in this county, folks, believe me. It's only costing you $9 million, but don't worry. They just been paid off, what you paying for capital, folks?
Okay, so we have another, we have another public comment.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you.
Mona Barudi again. Earlier I said, help us, help you, help everybody else. So I want to extend my offer to Mary. I have access to the whole women of the Moose and several dedicated community members who are already vetted and doing work, not just saying they want to. We can contact everybody on your list in one day. From the results, we can build a new list that'll separate those who are contactable by phone from those who need visits, or those who may live elsewhere, and this is not their primary, will ask your questions.
Mona, Mona?
And I'm going to give you my card.
Thank you.
Rosemary Wilson from McCullumie Hill. When this fire took place, I had just gone over to England to visit my 93-year-old mother, and in fact, I, I left to come back to sort out the claims adjuster the day after her 93rd. And I was looking for whatever information I could get from the, about the fire, the course of the fire, what people were, were doing in response to the fire. And as a result of, of what I found, I, as a member of the Mental Health Advisory Board, I put an item on the agenda whereby the department could, could let us know what they had been doing. And I learnt of how people were at the evacuation centers, they were, wherever they were needed to provide assistance, and ranging from hand-holding, whatever, whatever it took to reach out to the community. And I didn't want you to get the impression that, that mental health was sitting on their hands doing nothing, waiting for a list to be developed, because I think far from, far from that, although it was very difficult for me to find out, back in England, you know, people were, were working on, and doing their, doing their job. Last week I got up also because although there are centers in West Point and Mountain Ranch, and there is some, oftentimes in the, in the conversation where railroad flat is brought up, I still have to say and ask the question, is enough being done, Mary, for the people of McCullumie Hill? And also Glencoe, although I admit, Glencoe may not have a, a definite center, that's certainly a strong community. I live where if I look out my window, which fortunately my house in, in, in McCullumie Hill was, was okay, but I can look out and see dead, you know, dead, dead parts of dead trees from, from distance about a quarter of a mile. So although, although downtown McCullumie Hill survived, if you look at the map, McCullumie Hill stretches a long way, and it's, it's a strange, at least according to the postal service, it's a, it's, it's a strange shape. So you could be in McCullumie Hill with, with no house, but it would be extremely difficult to go up and through Jesus Marie Road and down railroad, flat road to get to Mountain Ranch, and equally, or maybe not quite as difficult to get up to West Point.
Most people, Rosemary, sorry to interrupt, but just to answer that, for the people I've talked to who've lost their place, and you know this as well, to me, it seems like most folks are going to San Andreas, because that's the closest center, you know, it's only a few minutes away. So I'm not, I, I just don't know about, logistically, what we would put in, in Moke Hill, and how many people that would actually reach.
Yeah, I don't know either, but each time I listen, and McCullumie Hill is, is as if it had not been affected.
Yeah. But I'm just, yeah, I've been thinking about it, like, and when I, I just don't get the feeling that there's a lot of people that would utilize it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's been quite a while, even though it's, it's, it's not, we're, we're early into this process, but it's been quite a while since the fire, so expect people have, have sought out their, their own information. But I just want to get some guarantee that McCullumie Hill is being, you know, given the same whack as, as Mountain Ranch there.
Well, you're gonna have, Mountain Ranch is going to be more of a focus, just simply because of the, I mean, and you know this, the, the size of the destruction and where it was located is, is epicenter is Mountain Ranch. And so, you know, logistically speaking, you're going to have most of the activity there, rather than Moke Hill, where, yes, it was impacted, but not nearly to the degree Mountain Ranch is. There also was a, a, they did have FEMA trailer center, you know, remote center set up there, probably not the best location, but it was in, in Moke Hill, across from the gas station.
Yes, I, I did see that.
And very few people utilized it. So I'm just, you know, I, I agree, I mean, Moke Hill is, you know, very important to me, but I'm just not sure if, how many people we're going to reach.
Well, after all, that's the important thing, getting the word out to those, to those people, but they should be included as well.
I think the people that are out there right now probably have the word, it's just that you're probably just going to have to reach out and touch them somehow to, to get them to come in. And that's, could be a distinct possibility.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rosemary.
I could address that issue. The Resource Connection had a food distribution center there, and they also provided information. And we've been out there actually quite a few times with staff doing, addressing issues with people who, with the viewed fire victims, so it's not as if we haven't, we've been there quite a bit.
Yeah, I think maybe, Rosemary...
It's just that, we don't have an outstation, so I didn't list it as such. But I can probably have them listed as a separate report on the next one.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
That's an easy one.
Hi, I'm Keith Zalestra, I live on Jesus Maria Road. I'm looking at you guys, and you're all very clean and very well dressed, so I'm assuming you all still have a house. Is that correct? Didn't burn down? 50, 60 years' worth of possessions aren't gone in 10 or 15 minutes? You're coming in here, I don't, I got work to do, I've got cleanup to do, so I can't wait to get to this urgency ordinance thing. You know, actual help to fire victims would be wonderful. I'm talking shovels, chainsaws, hands, dump trucks, that's help. Adopting an ordinance that makes more hoops and puts more time limits, I remember at the first fire meeting, I think it was Ms. Stedfield, were you at the first fire meeting up here? One, some representative of the council was there, and they said, we're considering registering all the RV trailers that people are going to stay in. In what world does that help a fire victim to register the RV and check up on him every six months? That's another hoop, that's another barrier, it's another problem. This ordinance addresses RVs. You don't need an ordinance. The last thing you need right now is more ordinances, more hoops, and more things to get in the way. If you want to help fire victims, help would be appreciated. Screwing us up is not appreciated. I've heard the terms this morning, I believe it was legal reality, last week I heard the term political reality. If you had lost your house and all your possessions, you would be dealing with reality, reality has nothing to do with ordinances and paperwork and everything else, that's what happens here. If that's the way people think that you're going to help, the most help you can be is to sit quietly, fold your hands, and stay in San Andreas. If you want to help, we need help, yes. We do not need ordinances, we do not need laws, we do not need absorbent permit fees. I know that could be voted out, but it hasn't been. Basic permit fee is 166 bucks to get the people that burned my power down to put it back up. I had to give the county $166 for one guy to drive a pickup 17 miles and sign a card. You want to help? I could use that money. I just bought, bought a new chainsaw, because my old one burned, 300 bucks. That would have been over half of that chainsaw, that silly permit fee. Why are we doing this to people when you could be helping? I hear all day you want to help the fire victims, fine, help them, don't get in the way. That's all I got to say, I gotta go to work.
Any other public comments?
House of Congress Taxpayer Association, this is probably on the next topic coming up, but that gentleman hit a nail right on the head, you don't need more laws. And we're going to get into discussion of more laws, but boy, it's a reality check.
Okay.
I've been waiting all day for this proposition to come up before you, and I'm, I can't wait any longer either. I just, I'm Carol Phelps, Mountain Ranch resident, and I also agree with what that gentleman said. He's been sitting here all morning, all day, like you. I read quickly the proposition that's going to come before you. This is a disaster.
So we, we really can't talk about that one?
Other people have been taking lots of time, the gentleman in the red shirt has spent 20 minutes since this morning. You're going to cut me off?
I don't, I don't want to cut you off, I just know that we can't talk about what's on the agenda as an agenda item. It's the next one.
And when do you, when do you plan to get to it?
Really soon, we're going to talk way faster with these next gentleman over here.
But if you want to talk in general terms, not specific terms, like the gentleman who just said, you know, we don't like permit fees, then you could...
Yeah, he was real general.
Okay. Real general, okay, I'll try. I've been working with the fire victims in, in Mountain Ranch and all the way over to Moke Hill. Please, 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 do not put more in their way for getting assistance. There are a lot of people with, is it general?
Yeah, absolutely, let's be honest.
Okay. There are a lot of people, I don't know the numbers, maybe 100, 200 people that don't have insurance, that fall between the hoops. And as this gentleman said, he needs the money to pay for the chainsaw. Please help these, these people who are falling between, they're your residents. This is disaster. What about disaster, and this is exceptional? The only other disaster that's probably happened like this has been to the Miwok Indians when we came along. This is the first time this, something like this is happening in Calvares... This is the first time this, something like this is happening in Calaveras County. Please make exceptions. Thank you.
Alrighty, so I'm gonna make an exception right now. Let's move on to the next agenda item. We'll come back to this one because we still have Peter, but Peter's gonna be here anyhow, so.
Can I make a comment because I didn't know when you were gonna end it?
We're gonna come back to it.
Oh, you're gonna come back to this?
Yeah.
Okay, you're gonna chop chop through this one?
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be a chop chop.
Five minutes.
So Carol, we're gonna, if you want to get more specific on this, we're gonna move it to right now. But it may take a while before we get to public comments.
Jeff, yes. Oh yeah, you're a department head, that's right.
Yeah, so we only have, we have two more department heads to have come up and give a presentation after this, but, and, you know, there's a lot of people been waiting all day long to get to this ordinance and I think we should get to it, so. Here we go.
Well, that was a heck of an introduction to an ordinance.
Thank you.
Peter Maurer, planning director, and I think what this ordinance is trying to do is remove constraints, so it does allow people to get on their property and allows help, but it may not be the help that everyone wants, but this is what we can do to remove some of the constraints that are in place with, under our current code to allow emergency housing. There was one big issue that was hanging over everyone's head last week, we went back to look at, see if there were other options, we reached out to other counties, I know that Megan, Jason, and I each spoke with our counterpart in Lake County to see what they have done. And we, we still not feel comfortable recommending approval of ordinance that exposes people to hazards. And so we haven't come up with a solution that we, you know, that we probably knew we couldn't come up with anyway. It's really a decision that you as a board need to make. But if you wish to allow residences to be placed back on the property before they're certified as being safe, the language that was proposed last week, we feel is the best we can do. There are a couple other changes that we're recommending. And I passed out a sheet earlier this morning, I think it's a deal with the section 1793-070, temporary off-site housing. And after some discussion yesterday with Supervisor Wright, doing a little bit of research on some mobile home parks that are up in the area that could be utilized for off-site housing, realized we needed to make some modifications. There's an additional modification I would like to make to subsection C, and I'll just read the way we would recommend that it be changed. Temporary shelters or emergency housing consisting of more than one unit shall be connected to water and sewer service and a power source approved by the building official. A single off-site unit shall be connected to water and sewer provided in section 1793-040 B4 and B5. So just differentiate between a single house on someone else's property versus more of a trailer park or more of a cluster or complex of temporary housing. The other changes that we had discussed last week were adding alternative power source, this would be under section 040, other power source approved by the county building official. And after discussion with HCD this morning, we're recommending a change to section 040C. After the first, the end of the first sentence, add just phrase for RVs, and then the end of that section, a sentence says, "All other temporary residential units shall be subject to permitting inspection requirements set forth by HCD standards." That's something that HCD has said they're going to require regardless.
For what?
For anything other than an RV, HCD is going to be inspecting the FEMA housing as well as the, any kind of mobile home that goes on the property. So our recommendation is that the ordinance be adopted as originally recommended with those changes, passed out earlier this morning, that differentiate between a single unit on another piece of property versus multiple units on the site, adding recreation zone to multi-units. And the other changes I just read, a couple of things that I wanted to point out as well, we talked about last week, the two-years timeframe with the ability to extend it one year. This ordinance, I would hope that it would ultimately become a permanent part of our county code, so that if, heaven forbid, we have another emergency, it's in place, people can do, you know, can respond immediately. And we don't know what the state might do in that case. We can and we will extend things for a period of three years for this specific emergency, it's provided in that. The language in there also says that the EO, the executive order from the governor, would supersede anything in our code anyway. And that we really trying to find as many different alternatives as we can for housing off-site and be able to get people back on houses, on their site as soon as possible. One of the things that, I know I spoke with someone who was unaware, that this ordinance would allow someone, say if, you know, my home was lost and Debbie offered, you know, to put a trailer on her property for me to live in, that would be permitted. So that's something that we would also allow, a very simple self-certification process to be able to do that. So with those changes, this is our recommendation. If you have any questions? Jason, Jeff, Megan and I are here to answer this.
Yeah, I guess I do have a question. Sorry, Mike, go ahead. You know, I guess it just comes back to what we were talking about, you know, last week. And that is, you know, the question of common sense, like the lady who came and spoke earlier today, she has, I mean, a textbook example of where this, there should be an exemption. So, you know, it not only helps her move forward, but, you know, helps the county use our, the cleanup efforts go to other places that need it first. So, I mean, it just doesn't make sense that we can't come up with some type of exemption for a common sense, you know?
I did want to clarify to the board that although Mr. Maurer was presenting some additional language that staff came up with regarding recreational area and placement of, placement in different zones, I wanted to remind the board that there is also language that staff presented to the board after lunch last Tuesday that offers some alternative language as well regarding the footprint and distances from the footprint. It's, as we were discussing last week, it's an imperfect, it's imperfect, but staff, we have reached out to our resources, we've looked at other models, we've looked at other language, and, and the language that was presented to the board last Tuesday after lunch, together with the language that was presented this morning, is likely the, it allows for the most possibilities for people to get back to their property sooner rather than later.
So the language that was presented last, you know, last week in the afternoon after lunch does allow for a property to get back on their property before it's certified clean. Again, we're not recommending it because of just the safety issue, but this is an alternative that could be adopted by the board if you felt that was appropriate. And I think that's what Megan was trying to say.
Mr. Maurer, could you clarify that statement, just so I understood it correctly?
Sure.
Language contained in the proposal now allows people to come back on their property, although we don't recommend it or we're not preventing them. Is that what I understood?
If you choose as a board to adopt the language that was presented last week after lunch, that would allow that to occur, yes.
Yeah, so we actually don't have that in our board packet?
Something that we can make copies of, it was an oversight when we inserted into the program for, for agendizing.
I have copies, but you all had copies for last week.
Is this the change?
This is where the change comes from.
Thank you, Peter.
Peter, he's really resourceful.
Yeah. What else you got prepared for?
Yeah. Pull some more out of your hat there, Peter.
Something up your sleeve?
Yeah. And that would include the newest revisions on this as well?
I believe that's just for the one portion of the ordinance that was, that addressed the additional language after lunch last week. I do notice in this, there was discussion last week and it was just discussed by Mr. Maurer about additional language under C6 that allows for other electrical source approved by the county building department that would dovetail or have similar language, similar to 5D above. There was discussion last week about that and that was something that you had just brought up now.
I recommended that previously, yes.
Okay, looks good to me, I'll, I actually have another suggestion. You know, when somebody goes out there on their property and they have, they're gonna have to put up a pole, right? It's gotta be permitted, good with that, it's gotta be done. Couldn't, at that time, when that rent permit happens, couldn't they decide then where that temporary housing is gonna be, so that they don't have to go, come up with another permit?
Are you, I'm not sure I follow the question, the inspector, when the inspector goes out to the field to inspect the pole, would that be?
Because right now what they're doing, they're gonna, they're gonna go out and they're gonna pay for a permit for the pole, right? Then when they put the temporary housing or RV or whatever it is on there, they're gonna have to pay another permit fee, right then?
Under the governor's executive order, the permit fees for temporary housing were waived.
Right.
Okay, isn't it in here somewhere? That's what I read.
Our list. We're talking, there's, the fees are related to reconstruction of the building site, but for the temporary housing, under the executive order by the governor, those permit fees have been waived.
Has the power permit fee been waived to you?
No, the power pole is a permanent, it's going to be used if they rebuild, it will be the one that connects, so that had, and there's been quite a few that have been put up already. And there's also a methodology for people without insurance to get, apply to the Board of Realtors who raise money to cover those costs.
Correct. Yeah, go ahead and, you can, they have an application process through the Board, Calaveras Board of Realtors, and they will pay, they will reimburse you that a hundred and sixty-six dollars for that permit fee. I would like to actually try to set something else up to where, you know, instead of going through that process, where we could figure out a way to have them write a check for so many fees or permits or something like that, rather than, you know, do this constant process.
Chairman Edson, does that apply to all permits or those are permits that are non-insured? Because I believe that the permits for insured properties are covered through the insurance.
Under insurance, yeah.
So we're talking about the folks that don't have insurance?
Correct.
And this is a temporary power pole for construction, is that correct?
Yeah.
Actually, I believe it would be a permanent power pole.
It's gonna be the one.
It will be the permanent power pole, whether they use it for the temporary housing or whether they use it when they rebuild their homes. It's to bring the electricity in from the public right of way to the property.
Currently, we have...
Excuse me, sir, could you identify yourself for the audience?
Oh, I can remember who I am, at least to this point. Jeff White, the billing official, Calaveras County. Currently, we have issued approximately a hundred and four service, electrical services. And they're generally, almost every single one of them, with the exception of a few, are 200 amp services. Those will be designed by the standards for, on a pole generally, that are intended to be there, not temporarily. We're not considering those to be temporary.
Well, that's also the requirement for FEMA, for temporary housing.
Right. Now, if somebody brings in a FEMA home, they don't have the pole set yet, we would charge for the electrical connection to the service panel. There will be no charge for the temporary house, we can't, we're not gonna charge any permit fees for those under the EO. The EO says those temporary setups are waived, so the board doesn't have to waive those, it's already done by the governor's office. So the pole gets a hundred and sixty-six bucks worth, then from then on to the house is no charge, and we still have to do the inspections. And if they come in to get a permit for the temporary house, at the same time they pay for the permit for the electrical power, that's a one-stop theory, and then ideally they'll have everything ready for our inspections that we're doing for no charge, is expedited to where we can inspect the whole thing when it's set up.
Yeah, it'd be easier for you guys to...
Absolutely, absolutely. So we're looking at maximizing the minimum staff that we have for the, whatever this influx of temporary housing is gonna be.
So Jeff, so it seems like there's a system, thanks to the good people of the Board of Realtors, I suppose. So I'm just wondering, you know, if, you know, since this is the temporary ordinance here and you're putting power pole into the, for the temporary housing?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so could we go ahead and, you know, just delay that if needed, or folks just delay that, that permit cost until they do the permanent housing? Since this is a temporary...
That's kind of what I wanted to talk about, Jeff. Folks with insurance are probably not gonna have a problem with it. Some of the folks that may not have insurance, it could be, it could be delaying them that benefit to get there. If we could figure out a way to work it out with the Board of Realtors, because they already committed to this, to where we can maybe defer some of the, some of the non-insured folks to a certain point where they're agreeable with it, where they can come in and pay for those permits all at once, rather than each one at a time.
Well...
Maybe like ten at a time or something.
I would say that there is a multitude of different types of confusion that we would have to deal with with that, not that it's a bad idea, but for every good idea we have that looks really nice to start with, then you end up creating problems for yourself. And we have never, yeah, typically we have not issued permits without having the money first, paying out money then the ticket, right? So there's no reason why, if they can buy the pole, they could apply for the grant money by the Association of Realtors as, to be reimbursed through that process. It would probably still take the same amount of time, they'd only be out of the a hundred and sixty-six dollars in those cases for that length of time. Now, there's another, there's a couple other things that are going on here, when we have a mobile home... When we have a mobile home that comes in that's going to be permanent, not temporary, not under the EO, we have a permanent home, those are considered new construction, so that's not in the equation. That's, take, those fees that are associated with those setups would be, with the exception of, with the one-time fees that we can work out, would, would apply. That's mobile home. Now, a house, of course, would fall in the same type of condition where the fees would apply that, that aren't one-time fees and that all the inspections that go along with that for issuing a permit for new construction, reconstruction would, would take place. So the ordinance now speaks to, to get back on the ordinance, language speaks to the temporary housing, so that's what we, I wanna make that distinction that there's other things that aren't temporary and the power poles are not temporary.
That is true, but you never really answered the question, or maybe I just didn't understand it. But, but what I'm looking for from your department is, is a little bit more leadership. Like in the other departments, I'm seeing a lot of leadership out there, but I'm not seeing it from you guys as far as like, how are you gonna help people recover? And so like, I, I just haven't heard, I haven't heard how you're gonna assist. I heard how the Board of Realtors is gonna assist, but how is the, the building department gonna help people get through this hurdle?
I'm listening to whatever advice you may have on that subject, because I beg to differ that we're not helping.
Well, then what, what do you suggest we do to help, help people with this?
People have called us constantly. They're asking the right questions, we give them the right information. We are providing information on a daily basis. We are meeting with HCD tomorrow for cross-training for my staff and their staff to make sure that how we do the inspections on these setups is done with the HCD standards. We wanna all be doing that the same way. We are dealing with a lot of public constantly. We're giving them every, all the information that we have to help proceed with what is going on. What's happening now, in front of us, is the cleanup and the stabilization of the environment out there. That's what's happening now. We have not received but maybe one submittal for a reconstruction of a part of a dwelling. So they, they're not coming to us yet.
But they're going to.
They will, they will, and we will have the ability to help them with their independent problems, whatever those might be.
So I gotta say that, I know that one of your employees lost her place too.
Mm-hmm.
And I have, I've heard from numerous folks how good your department has been to them and they've been very helpful. The, and we're real, real happy that, you know, you guys were able to come up with this too. This is creative, this is helpful. And so I, I actually appreciate the efforts that you guys are making.
I'm glad to hear that, because we definitely are doing everything that.
It's a.
We're a unique, we're a unique operation compared to all the other jillions of things that are going on out there.
And, and you know, it's a tense time for a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
And.
I'm, I'm telling you, my department, myself, are on the ragged edge with this thing and we're doing the best we can to hold it together. I've been working almost every single weekend.
And I am concerned about, I am concerned about another, a month from now, because it's gonna start rolling and hopefully you guys are gonna be geared up for that, because that's gonna be, it's gonna be a wild ride for about a year and a half, you know that, right?
Oh, absolutely, and that's what, that's what we are, we're making all the, the attempt to get.
Plus this.
Plus, yeah, yeah, we got, again, the RFP is getting the final touches put on it, that's, that's gonna provide us with a great deal of reinforcement with the right people doing the right things. So I've met with the fire chiefs last Wednesday, we talked about their role in life here and they are, you call on them, they'll be there. I know there's been some concerns on that, they don't wanna be left out of the, the big picture here. The fire departments are definitely plugged in. So, you know, that, for every, everything that we try to stay in front of, there's like a lineup of other things coming and we're doing the best we can to stay on top of it and give real information. The, you know, the, I haven't been able to spend much time in my department because I've been doing a lot of other things and, and I'm trusting that my staff is being informed well enough of depending on all the outcomes of all the meetings we're doing to, to haul the shots the best they can without making mistakes, and I think they're doing a good job of that.
And that is, you know, I don't know if people know, but Jeff was, as soon as it was cool enough to walk out there, Jeff was on the assessment teams to identify the buildings, structures out there and the buildings out there, the damage to them. So he was working with the Cal Fire Strike Assessment Team, right?
Yes.
Right from the get-go, I think probably from the third day, actually.
Second day, yeah.
Second day.
Actually, the first day, it is, so.
Yeah, so.
I lost track of the.
And, you know, he's, and he was out there to identify all, at, at that time with five hundred and forty-eight homes is what you identified, and all that time away from his regular department, regular job, which puts a burden on, you know, everybody else in, in that department. So, yeah, we understand that there's double duties being played.
Well, and I appreciate the recognition of that, because, you know, you, I don't expect to be the guy that gets noticed on everything, I'd just soon stay away from that. But the, I, I know, I recognize when I need to do what I need to do and I try to do it without bothering other people and get the job done and, and if we have good results, that's what we're looking for. There's time to react and there's time to think about things. For a long period of time, it was.
React.
You better react and you better react now. And, and now we're in a phase where Public Works and Jason's shop are, they are leading the charge here and we're working very closely with them. We're, they've given us lists to go out and look at some imminent threats on some, on some structures that are out there to see if they're gonna be subject to mudslides or debris flows. So we're gonna make contact with those people and, and let them know if there's an imminent threat, if we can remove some of those threats before we get a rain event, that's what we intend to do. So they're out, my people are in the field right now just doing that very thing. So every day, we have another section of concerns that have to be prioritized, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know that you're identifying stuff right now. Jason is those, Jason's in, in a mode, Jeff is gonna be, the other Jeff is gonna be reacting if it rains and then it's your turn.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can't wait. But I wanna assure the board that we are doing what we need to do to stay prepared in advance of the influx that is sure to come. We wanna handle it efficiently and as quickly as possible to make sure that the, the best results can be produced, so.
Can we talk to the Realtors Association and possibly have one of, you know, their, their applications put on your counter?
I think they're there right now and I, do we have one on the website yet? The application for, through the, it's called the.
Calvares Realtors Association.
Yeah, it's the.
I'm not sure, but if we don't, we certainly can get that one put on there.
Yeah, California Association, Association of Realtors and it's this one-page application and you fill it out and it's, looks like it's called the Purpose for the Request for Grant Assistance. So that's, that's there and I encourage people that would like to look into that opportunity to do just that.
Perfect.
So.
We are bringing Jeff back. Seems like we got a little distracted from the ordinance.
Yeah, I've, a lot of this, we, you know, I'll probably be revisiting some of the things we talked.
I wanna thank you too, but I'll wait, please.
Yeah, yeah, so when we get done with the ordinance part.
You mean I gotta do it again?
Yeah, yeah, in case you weren't listening the first time.
Yeah, I won't, I won't say anything.
No, you're okay, Chris, I just want, I, I don't mind you bringing that up, but I, I do have a reaction to what I know we're doing.
I think we just have different philosophies.
May, oh, well, that's the way the world works.
All right, so let's get back to the ordinance, public comments.
House of Gala Taxpayer Association. You know, there may be a real simple solution to some of the stuff. We're really breaking our brains, trying to create new law, trying to envision how it's gonna help people and not hurt people. Our doctor friends have a slogan they follow, or they try to follow is, above all else, do no harm. Above all else, do no harm. Well, this leads us to a different way of thinking. There is a problem with that ordinance, present ordinance, that allows people to live in their, legally to live in a, in a travel trailer or an RV for two weeks. What's reality with that? Reality is, it's basically ignored in this county. There could be a large percentage, I don't know exactly how many, but there's a, a lot of people that live in RVs. They're not harassed by the building department, not harassed by anybody, and they, and they raise kids even. And this is called affordable housing. And it's the largest area of affordable housing in this county. That's reality. That's reality. In other words, this is occurring without government being involved and it's actually occurring, ignoring government, ignoring the, the law against living in RV over two weeks. Okay, so what can we do to do no harm? Well, probably, since that ordinance doesn't work anyway, repeal it. Okay, there's no more law about how long you can live in RV. What's gonna happen? Well, probably not much difference happening now. Most people, when they can afford it, like to live in a home rather than a RV. If you can't do that, then the next best thing would be to suspend it for a length of time, probably not two years, maybe five years. And that should get, should get us beyond the economic, negative economic impacts of the fire. But there's things coming down the road from the state that's gonna affect us, even if we ignore it, and that's increased taxation. We almost had a law that would require people to drive half as much as they do. It was defeated, didn't quite make it, but it almost did. And there's, the carb regulations alone are gonna put a tremendous burden on the backs of people and the, and it's the people that can least afford it. The, the retired people and social security and, and people just starting out, they're the ones that have the, that have, bear the brunt of this overtaxation craziness going on at the state level. So, rather than, we would recommend that you do pass an amendment to that ordinance, basically repeal it or put a long period of time where people can live in RVs if they want to. It makes sense, it hurts nobody, and it stops possible oppression. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'm Jodeen Mills again. Not so many now that I do like the direction that this seems to be going, because I came down here because I've seen firsthand what people are doing right now and really getting them in an RV or a trailer is gonna be better than them living in tents. I know there's a lot of concern about the toxicity and stuff in the soil, but when you're in a tent, you really don't have any protection from that at all. And I think that with, we, we have a lack of rentals in our community that people can afford. I think in our area, there are, there are a lot of older people that are uninsured, a lot of them bought a piece of property, put a little cabin on there that's, you know, post-imperial construction. When I was selling insurance, you can't insure those structures, so they just went without and then they retired and moved up there full-time without really thinking about the ramifications of it. And now they're at a point in their life that they can't afford the price of rentals. One of my friends that lost his home and everything he worked for, one of the statements that he made was he was able to find a rental here in San Andreas, but it's thirteen hundred dollars a month. It's not a nice house, it's a little tract home, but like he said, what are the people going to do that don't have the means to afford this or to be able to just go down and write a check, a deposit check for a thirteen hundred dollar a month? Kind of not-so-great, shoddy tract home in San Andreas. And having lived in Mountain Ranch for so long and having so many friends that were even born and raised there, we know the incomes of the people in that area and they can't support that. And so I think that with the direction you're moving, with them being able to move a trailer onto their property, I think they should have to have water, I think they should have to have septic. But even if it's a hundred and fifty feet from their burnt-up house and even if it's a trailer that's just sitting there waiting to be inhabited, it gives them hope and I think that that's what a lot of people up there really need right now is some hope and some kind of movement forward so that they're not getting frustrated and, I mean, that's, I think, something none of us want, because if they're frustrated and go down to the building department, they'll take their frustrations out there if they're given a roadblock and I just think it's the right way to move, to go ahead and agree to let them do that.
Thank you.
Marty Crane, good afternoon. We have a housing element that comes up from time to time and we've had a lot of discussion about it and there always seems to be roadblocks or, or things that stop it from actually being implemented. And I would just like to say heads up, next time this comes before us, can we just remember back to what we're talking about right now? Thank you.
Mona Baruti, I have a question, I wanna make sure my understanding is correct, because I'm also concerned about renters who have been evicted from the properties that their landlords owned that were burned. Is there, my understanding is that if they were, if they have a mobile, mobile home or a motor home or a trailer, they will be able to go into a mobile home park as victims of the Butte Fire, having lost their home in normally non-compliant temporary shelter in either mobile home parks or on private land?
So the variety of options that people have if they lost their home, they can be, go back on the site, subject to owner's permission, if they're renters. They can place a RV or, or temporary mobile home on someone else's property that wasn't harmed by the fire, or they could, or they could go into an existing mobile home park or we have provisions for setting up temporary mobile home parks or FEMA housing sites where there's multiple units, sort of variety of different options.
Under the ordinances that I read before this proposal came up, it appeared that in order to put an RV on property, it had to comply with different codes, for example, Department of Transportation codes or the year it was built, or that they had to have current licensing and had to be easily or legally movable. Is that still the case?
RVs are still subject to state licensing requirements. They're considered temporary vehicles. A mobile home or modular unit is inspected by the state when it's manufactured and is gonna be subject to those same standards that are done when they're manufactured. But as far as our ability to allow a wide variety of different types of temporary housing, we've tried to loosen up the rules as much as possible to provide as much flexibility as we can.
Great, thank you.
So that one there, I'd like to hear from Jeff. Cause I know we have an ordinance and you were talking about at one time, you know, some of these, some of, actually, some of these older mobile homes are, are really good shape and then some of the newer ones are really bad shape.
Well, that's correct and we see that some, contrary to some beliefs, they hold up rather well over the years. We've had, in this case, our ordinance for anything that's over fifteen years or older does not apply. So the, on temporary housing, they can bring any, you know, a, a unit that is older than fifteen years, so that's a good thing. So a lot of these, this executive order has relieved some of the strain that we would normally have to find its pitfalls that we are probably gonna be to an advantage by the, by the way that has, has been written.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions?
So my own, my only question is, is if the executive order said three years, then why do we have two years?
I can chime into that. The reason, at least from my understanding, is the intention of this is for long-term planning also. It, it is something that will, will address the urgency right now, but our hope as staff is that we can bring it forward through the permanent ordinance, ordinance adoption process to have it in our code long-term for future disasters, so we don't have to have an urgency ordinance if, at some point in the future, we have to deal with another disaster. It's my understanding through discussions with HCD that the three-year term in the executive order is, is something that is, is a rare, a rare thing. That's why in this ordinance as drafted, we do have a clause that, that allows for, if an, if an executive order is issued, the executive order is the governing document. So if there are any, any inconsistencies between the, the ordinance that we have versus an executive order that's issued, the executive order would, would, would rule. So in this situation, because we have an executive order in this one disaster, the three-year, we already know three years would apply. In future cases, an executive order may not be three years, it may be one year, it may be two years, and staff felt that two years was a good, reasonable amount of time for these provisions to apply in a disaster situation.
Any comments from the public on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on that. So the executive order is three years on the state level. We're looking at a two-year with a one-year option, and the executive order takes precedence over any dispute. Why are we putting a two-year issue, other than reasons explained by Legally, you did a very good job? That's just a question, not a statement. To protect ourselves in the future, or is to protect our people in the future? Mr. Maurer?
Any timeframe is somewhat arbitrary, and hopefully, we will never face a disaster of this scale again. But there is likelihood that we could have flooding, we could have some other fire that, you know, there are homes that might be destroyed in the future. Two years tended to be the standard that most other jurisdictions had looked at and had adopted. It seemed like a reasonable time period. We also provide the flexibility to have extensions of that if there were, you know, circumstances that say, well, okay, you know, we need more time. But as Megan explained, the, this specific disaster, the state declared, the governor declared three years. We don't know what could be the future in two years, this seem to be reasonable.
Could, could I present a scenario to you? I'm Mike Olivera, and I own a home, or did own a home, in Mountain Ranch, total loss right now. I'm insured, but then again, I can't go on my property until we get a permit to go on the property. I'll get my power pole in there, get my clean bill of health from our Health and Safety Department, I mean, our Health and Environmental Health, and then I'm gonna be drawing up plans, and it's, I'm gonna be taking it for my new home that I'm going to rebuild, to our building department, and I'm not gonna be able to get those to them probably until another 90 days. And then the planning department's gonna look, review those plans, initially a building permit, and going through that process. I and 55 other homes, new homes, decided to put our plans in within 30 days each. Do you think I'll be able to start construction within two years? It could, could take me a year to build that home, probably.
The start of construction, definitely. Finishing construction-
You don't think there'll be any time strength with a two-year-
There will be, there's no question. I mean, I think that last year, we issued 65 building permits for new single-family starts. If everyone decides to rebuild at the same time, we are going to be swamped.
I think 65 is a, is a pretty reasonable figure compared to 575.
So, you know, Jeff pointed out, you know, the other departments are, that, this is their crunch time. Our crunch time will come when people start getting ready to rebuild, and we are reviewing all those new plans, both planning and building, particularly building. You know, our review is relatively simple, but the building department will have a huge workload coming up. But yes, I do believe that two years is, you know, we, we better have an ability to get those permits issued out as quickly as we can, given the circumstances, and if we can't do it within, you know, a few months, then we've got a problem.
Well, you know, I'm just looking at Weed. They've been out there for a year now, and they have 17 homes built in a year. I don't know how Valley's gonna do, you know, they're kinda close together. It's kinda different up here, really. I'm just thinking of, all right, so, and after two years, this, well, I guess it really, I, I just don't understand what, why we're putting it in there if the executive order already says three years.
Let's just do three years.
We can bring it back at the end of the three years and, and adopt it into whatever plan that we have with whatever period of time that we want.
I just want to remind the board that this, in this disaster, there's already three years that, that this would apply, because that is what the executive order says. So we're looking at a future disaster. I'm, like, like Mr. Maurer indicated, hopefully, we will not face a disaster of this magnitude anytime soon, but there, it is likely that we may have other disasters that may not reach the level or the impact as this one has. So in essence, then, if we, if we do an automatic three years, then that's what, what would apply for all future disasters. The way that it's drafted, it allows for two years and an additional year at the discretion of the board. So it does allow for the flexibility there already to go to three years without an executive order saying otherwise. For this disaster, we already know, per the executive order, that it's going to be three years.
Okay, Mr. Maurer and Mr. White, might decide that bingo, I get to build my house, and it comes to the point of, oh, I'm at my two-year limit. What's the procedure? What do I have to do to get that one-year extra extension?
Nothing.
Nothing at this point, because the executive order-
Is it automatic, or they reissue, or what happens?
The executive order applies, so it would, the three years is already in, in place for this disaster.
Once the permit is issued, there is a timeframe in which you need to make regular inspect, you know, proceed with construction, regular inspections, and a final of, of the permit. I think Jeff would be able to explain a little better the extension provisions that are already in the code for extending billing permits.
If you were to bring your plans in today and didn't pick them up for a year, that's okay. Then let's say you don't do anything for, you put in the foundation, and we don't hear again from you for six months, that's okay. We, then from that inspection, for another six months, that's okay. Every six months, we have show activity on the permit, we're good. Should we run into any other obstacles that are unforeseen, we can do an extension request, that's okay. So we have a lot of mechanisms in place to provide for extenuating circumstances unforeseen that will allow the construction to go unimpaired by the involvement of the building department.
So I would, I don't have to notify the building department at the end of two years?
Well, you, at the end of two years, if you haven't done anything, we would expect something in the way of plans or, you know, submittal of plans if you plan to build your house.
Three years in this cir-
And three years in this particular circumstance, which is under the executive order.
Okay, right. In other words, if I didn't get it, you've got the plans, I'm working, but I put on my porch, whatever I do. But at the end of two years, this ordinance would, would say two years with a one-year option, but I don't have to notify the building department? I'm not completed yet, I don't need a final, I need that extra option here? It's just automatic?
Yeah, that, that would be under the executive order that pertains to the Butte Fire.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to do anything-
So, yeah, the Butte Fire's, yeah, the Butte Fire's covered, and the Valley Fire's covered, for the three-year period. So be-
Why do we have it in there?
Well, I, I think what they wanna do is they wanna, they wanna put it into a future plan, so, into our general plan, right? So that, so that we can not have to mess with it again.
It doesn't, I don't think it really matters, right? If it's two or three years? Doesn't, it doesn't-
It doesn't matter-
It's made that number up. It could be 16,000 years. I mean, it doesn't really matter at this point.
We need a timeframe of some sort, and if it's, if we're gonna use this ordinance for upcoming events, if that should happen, then this doesn't predict that an executive order for the governor's office is gonna say 16,000 years. It says that we have an ordinance for two years.
And this is a good, actually, good guideline for, for something that may happen in the future, we don't have to go through this again.
Okay.
It could save some time.
Oh, it could save some time. I'm fine with it.
All right, so, any other public comments, please?
Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any board comments?
I have some comments.
Okay.
Peter, could you, the, what you sent today under the temporary emergency shelter, 1793.070, REC, is that the zoning for the mobile home?
That's a recreation zone, and it is a zone where at least one recreational or one mobile home park is located in the Aveiro Flat area.
Okay. So recreation mobile home park for that zoning. And then going back to what we did last week, so what I hear, the recommendation of this, or not, but what's being presented to the board, is the ordinance as written, with the addition of what staff did after the board directed, was to say the temporary replacement housing, absent a waiver of liability signed by the landowner, meaning that the landowner could go onto the property, show that there was water, sewer, utility, and it was indicating that it, the area did not have to be certified clean as long as the temporary structure was 150 feet from the footprint of damage. Is that pretty much what is being recommended right now?
That is not our recommendation, but this is language that we would find to be the most protective of public health, in the event that you feel that it's appropriate to, under the circumstances, allow people back on the property before it's cleaned up.
So staff's recommendation was the original ordinance, adding the section there about the environmental health could do the sewer alternate, building could do the alternate to power.
Yes.
And then taking a look at the exceptions that you presented today with the single mobile home, manufactured home, recreational vehicle on a private-owned parcel, adding the REC zoning.
Yes.
Correct? And then the temporary shelter or emergency housing consisting of more than one unit shall be connected to the water sewer.
Right.
All right.
And one other change that we just sort of realized at the very beginning of this section, we recommend we strike the requirement through issuance of a temporary use permit pursuant to chapter 1784. We would not require a temporary use permit for that.
What, what section is that?
It would read, it's 1793.070, it would read, "Construction or installation of one or more off-site dwelling units as a temporary shelter or temporary emergency housing for persons displaced by the disaster may be authorized, subject to the following."
Yes.
Correct?
I just wanted to clarify, so the board is aware that this is, this section here is for off-site, not onsite, so this would be setting up a, a separate-
Mobile home park.
Mobile home park, or having a, a unit on someone else's property.
I knew it was there somewhere.
So the off-site would be, i.e., you've been burned out, I'm going to allow you to come onto my property and set up your-
Yes. It could be a single unit on someone else's property, or it could be multiple units on recreational, multifamily, commercial, other zones.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make for the record, I don't know if this, spoke about this last week, I know I spoke a lot about the health hazards in the ash with the heavy metals and dust and ash, and also, the health officer supports the staff's original position. As the board directed us to come up with the alternative language in the 150 feet, that's based on particulate matter 10 micrometers or less, which is ash, dust, and heavy metals, and looking at if that is mechanically disturbed, that, that does not, that it can have a off-site impact of 50 meters to 100 meters, but that's with it mechanically, that ash or dust being mechanically disturbed. So with that being said, looking at their wind studies, felt that the 150 feet had some protections in there, and also, we don't want people parked right on top of the burned structure where the kids run out and, and are impacted, or the dog, and bring back asbestos or heavy metals in that ash. So I just wanted, so it was on the record where that 150 feet came in, so it wasn't, people didn't think it was just pulled out of the sky, so.
Yeah, but we already know it came from us, so it didn't get pulled out of the sky, Jason. Jason, one question, what standard is that?
That, that standard, that's just based off studies off of, of dust on dirt roads, looking at-
How does it see standards?
No, no, we just, I had staff research on how far particulate matter 10 micrometers or less could travel, and which, heavy metals fall into PM 2.5, which is in the ash, and looking at ash and dust itself. So that was looking at a variety of different studies done through universities, and, and that's what we were able to come up with, so.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Okay, board, what say you?
I already said I'd two thousand-
Are you making a motion?
Oh, sure, I'll make a motion to approve this with the additional changes in section B2.
Would be 1793.070.
040, temporary onsite housing, and then with the additional language that Peter Maurer suggested today.
And that would be the 17 dot 93.070.
Yeah. That we explained earlier.
I would like to clarify whether your motion is also including the provisions under 1793.040, 5D, and 6C that we discussed last week.
Could you read that counsel for me, just to-
5D provides other method of sewage disposal approved by the county environmental health department, and we discussed 6C would, would be similar language, other method of other electricity source approved by the county building official.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, all that. Do I have a second?
That's my motion. So I have a motion by Supervisor Wright. Do I have a second, please?
So, okay, before that goes forward, so on 040B2, you're including A, B, and C, right?
That is correct. It's what I call the common sense approach.
Let's see.
Property ownership implements.
Yeah, mainly, it's just to, you know, that lady who came up and talked earlier today, she has 40 acres, right? She can't do anything because we don't-
I think we're looking for a second, aren't we?
Yeah, we are.
Okay. I'm trying to compel you guys to give me a second. Mike, you can go ahead and second if you'd like, because we need to get, we need to be able to, be able to-
I understand, I understand Supervisor Wright, I'm just giving Supervisor a chance to digest all this, and give him an opportunity.
All right.
I guess I, I just have to comment, I continue to have a concern about people having, living on their property under these kind of conditions without the clean waiver, clean consent, whatever it might be, as they look at temporary housing, because we are looking at this into the future, at this particular ordinance and how we want to carry it forward, and that's just a general concern. I recognize people are going to, it is their property, they can do what they want with their property, they can live on their property, they can do whatever it is, it's their property to do so. But as policymakers, I think it's important that we take a look at the overall, general public health and safety well-being of the neighborhood, you might say, when you have these kinds of natural disasters that are devastating. And I just have a concern that this kind of waiver is not protective enough to the public health and safety of the community.
I will second the motion.
So, we have a, second by Supervisor Olivera. On favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Opposed.
Okay, it's four of them. Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you guys like to take a five minute break?
Sure.
Five minutes, please?
Five minutes.
Okay, so, why don't we continue so that we can finish? We still have a little ways to go. So, we're back to admin, and who do we have left? Jeff, do you want to go?
Good afternoon. I'll try to not over, overkill what we already talked about, but I will, it's worth mentioning, some of the things I have written down here is what our proactive measures are. What we are going to do tomorrow is we're going to have HCD personnel come, probably three or four of them, coming to the government center, meeting in the building department, and we are going to get deep into the weeds on how we can expedite and, and certify, and do a healthy, safe inspections of these homes that are coming in. And HCD will help us out when it comes to more than two units, and the county will do the rest of them, so they may even help us with some other things. But the, the point of this is to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, when HCD makes a call, it's a county call, the county call makes a call, it's the HCD call. I've been on the phone to HCD no less than five times a day, and that doesn't count the emails. We're well-prepared to, and this is a dynamic thing, there's a lot of different things happening all the time. Well, we got this, what, we want to make sure that what we are doing makes sense, and it can serve the purpose for moving quickly and effectively. So, that's, that's what we're going to do tomorrow afternoon. And then, I've also coordinated some meetings with water purveyors on what we will be working with the water purveyors for reconnects, because the fire sprinklers and new construction would be part of what they will have to plan for, for water supply. And we've, I've worked with Donna Leatherman yesterday on arranging to have a clear dialogue and some good expectations of how we can flow and, you know, water flow evenly without a problem. So, the, the, the thing that's, that I'd say the heart of my lineup right now, and my batting order, is the RFP. It's, we put in the final touches on the RFP, and that is, again, the expectation of a lot of work that we will, no doubt, have come our way. I will be able to have a contract with professional people in this, in the inspections and plan check, to help expedite and move everything along as needed. So, there'll be no, the idea of the RFP is to get the consultants, which are, we can call them contractors, or whatever you want to call them, these are the experts that are out there, that are available on a long-term basis, to make things happen as efficiently and quickly as possible, and get it right. So, that's, we're working on the RFP, should be done in the next day or so. And then, we're working with, I guess, Jason didn't want to hear me talk about how good he was, he left, but he is providing us with current information on the cleanups, so we will get, in other words, if somebody comes in and they want to do whatever they want to do on the cleanups on their property, we don't want to burden them with extra documents to bring in that they may not have prepared for, or had in their possession, so they will supply us with that information, it'll be on a database, so we can go, "Where do you live? Your address, your APN. Yes, you are certified clean, we can go to the next step." So, we're doing everything we can to pull out those blockades that could be something that would not necess, we don't want to unnecessarily slow down the process. So, we're monitoring our permit activity in the, in the burn area. Again, I will mention that we've had a hundred and four, as of yesterday, I believe it was, electrical service permits issued, the majority of them are two hundred amp services. We had virtually no activity on, in the part of reconstruction, it hasn't happened yet, and I believe the problem there, it's not a problem, I think the timing is all in when they can get their designs drawn by a professional, or somebody, or themselves, if they want to. Once they develop those plans, and that takes a while to get a, a set of plans together that we can look at, review, improve, and, and take care of. So, I, I know that's happening right now, we just haven't seen the end result of that type of work. So, again, that, that'll go right into the mix, we want to, I, I've said it before, I'll say it again, we want to put this stuff on the front burner, and get people active in their participation with the, with the process, and getting themselves back on their property, and a home that will be safe and sound, and, and approved, and everything will be done in the correct fashion.
Jeff, I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned, you mentioned about the contractor or consultant, right? Is that, how much, how much of that is recoverable?
Well, the, one of the, the methodology in this is to be able to, when we charge for the permits, hopefully, we will be able to recoup the, the permit fees to pay the, for the contractors who we would bring in. So, it's supposed to pay for itself.
Right.
And that's, that's the, that's the intent of this, so rather than go with the, the amount that we would be gaining back on a, say, a mutual aid type of thing, which would be short-term, the long-term thing is to try to put a, a process in place that'll pay for itself. So, if it didn't pay for itself, we would, we wouldn't be very diligent in doing this the way we're trying to do it.
Right.
Right, and also, by going with the consultant versus hiring building inspectors or hiring plan checkers, the, the consultant will be there as the need to ramp up comes. So, by doing the RFP and getting that out, and getting that contract in place, if in the spring it really takes off, then we can pull on that contractor, instead of trying to go out and hire, extra hire plan checkers, or extra hire building inspectors. That will be in place, so it will expedite the process for the homeowners that are trying to rebuild.
Yes, that's precisely correct. So, it's an as-needed basis. We wouldn't have the people, until we needed them, and the numbers until we needed them.
So, go ahead, Chris.
So, on that contract, I guess, can I get a copy of that?
When we, right now, the RFP has been through county council, and it's been approved, it's in our office, and we will be meeting with Jeff to finalize the scope of work under the contract, then, under the RFP, then the RFP will, will go out, and we will bring that contract to the board for approval.
Can you bring it, before it goes out, can you bring it?
The RFP?
Yeah, so we can take a look at it, if, if you'll agree, because I, I think what I want to make sure is that, you know, I don't want to have, I don't want to have extra eyes on it, just because it's a special situation, because I want to make sure that, that, you know, like, for instance, we're going to be having some, you know, there's a, there's an expanding economy throughout the region, so what I'm worried about is that they won't actually have the manpower to fill our needs. So, I mean, is that going to be explicitly addressed in that, and, or is, how is it, how is that going to be structured?
Well.
That's a discussion that I want to have, and I want to see the actual.
Well, we, I don't see any problem with that whatsoever. I think if you want to take a look at that, we've all, it's gone through county council's office to get the language, language right. We've done what RFPs are supposed to do, and you're certain, I don't see any reason why.
And, and quite frankly, if we have multiple contractors or consultants that apply, and they're qualified, we can enter into contracts with multiple firms to mitigate some of what your concerns are Supervisor Wright, in that it's much like with probation, or with Health and Human Services, they enter into contracts with a number of different facilities for placement of children, or.
Sure.
For seniors. We can also enter into contracts for, you know, with the scope of work, with the costs for, what hourly cost that we're talking about for a plan checker versus a building inspector, and then with a not-to-exceed amount on it, so that we can pull from multiple contracts if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe you hear my, my concern.
Right.
Is that when it comes crunch time, and hopefully, several hundred people want to build at the same time, we actually can utilize those, which, you know, hopefully, we can utilize that, that contract to make sure we have enough people, because I don't want to then be scrambling, "Oh, you know, they got pulled away by the, the valley fire, and now they only have one guy that they can, or gal that they can provide."
Well, and that's exactly the intent of this, is to, to round up as many resources as we possibly can, rather than just have one independent provider. So, I, I did talk to, last Thursday, I talked to three different consultant contract provider types that I, that what the RFP would address, and they all are assuring me that they could come through. So, I've had a personal conversation with them, and I'm not, you know, just, "Can you do this?" I, I wanted to sit down and actually talk, real talk about, "Here's what we're, here's where our problems are, we want to make them go away, can you help me?" Yes, we can, so.
And unlike many RFPs where you're awarding for a specific project and a specific contractor, where you award to one contractor, this will be a professional services agreement or contract, and there's nothing to preclude us from, or the board, from entering into that agreement with multiple consultants, so that we, we mitigate as much as possible, and can pull for as many resources if and when, well, when the time comes, and we get hit with a hundred building permits, so.
I understand that we don't, I just, I just want to make sure there's that, that manpower in reserve.
And, and that's the beauty of this, it gives us that flexibility, as opposed to saying, "Okay, we can afford to hire two building inspectors and two plan checkers, and for a couple of months, they sit there, you know, just with drips and drops, tripling, tripling in, and then all of a sudden, get hit with a whole bunch, and they can't handle it, and then we're kind of scrambling." So, this really gives the flexibility.
Well, you were looking for a plan checker already, weren't you?
Yeah, we got one, we got another one, yeah.
You got another one?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Does this include, does this RFP, is it RFP?
Mm-hmm.
Does it include, like, front desk help?
It could. We could include that. We're, we're contracting for services.
Because what I'm thinking is, is the, you know, it's like, we got, already, we were doing maximum work as a county, and then we have this big giant ball come along.
Mm-hmm.
It's got all, it's got all these demands. It'd be really nice if we could just put our folks back to work, the county, and have this big old giant ball be managed.
And that's precisely what my thoughts are. What, the Butte Fire would branch into a category of its own, and our everyday stuff that we are familiar with and how we handle it, we can do that, and we still have relief by bringing in the army that we need, whoever they may be. So, I do share your concerns. I was worried about if we start getting ramped up, where, are we going to have anybody out there? So, having the opportunity to have multiple providers to take care of this, and they're willing to do it, I think, the sooner we can get a hook in them, the better off we are, and that, one of the advantages with my participation with the state, and the, the CalBO, and, and the professional associations with the people in my line of work, we know each other. We've helped each other in the past. So, I'm calling in friends of mine.
Yeah. So, I noticed that in Valley Fire, what they did was they, you know, they have their line for regular business, then they had a line for fire, fire business, which kind of really made it a lot easier, I think, on, on what they were trying to do.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with what you're saying, because I think the, once we can see the need that this, we were able to deal with a lot of the, most of them are power reconnects, and that's been the meat of the whole thing.
Right now, yeah.
But by adding that extra dimension to the mix, we can, okay, you're in this line, and we'd go. So, yes, I think we're all on the same page of what this means, and how it can facilitate and expedite the people's needs.
Yeah, we're violently agreeing with each other.
Violently?
Well, we were earlier.
Yeah, no, yeah. As long as we end up with it in the same place. So, moving on to the next thing, FEMA has identified eighty-two different sites out there for evaluation that they can look at. Seven have qualified for, and for the positioning of, so they get seven that are qualified, they can, they can receive these homes. Again, I think FEMA's position is going to be a clean certified site. I don't know that our ordinance will change that perspective for them. It didn't sound like it would. Doesn't matter, we have seven sites identified, eighty-two more to look at, so things are moving in the right direction. That's, that's only a small piece of this. Eighty-two is not five hundred and some odd. So, our ordinance will work on, on stuff when it needs to work. So, if FEMA has their own rules, we can, we can deal with what those rules are.
So, what do we need to do to make it FEMA good?
You'd have to talk to them. But I don't know that that's going to be a problem for the hundred and fifty feet. I don't know that. I don't have an answer for that.
It is for the folks that were going to get.
I, I agree with you, and that's, it's, I think it's a FEMA.
Even despite the ordinance that was passed, FEMA, FEMA's requirements are that it's a certified clean lot.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
So, that's a, sorry.
You've got a pretty smart computer there.
I never saw your lips move.
Sure glad there wasn't a mic here.
So, that's, I don't, we don't, I don't think we have control over what FEMA's rules are, obviously.
Guess I'll have to talk to FEMA.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, FEMA's requirements, as they spelled out in the meeting we had with their housing, said it had to have power, water, sewer, access, certified clean lot, and a level area to place the module.
Well, I mean, what does a lot mean?
Yeah, I think that's where it gets.
So, we're talking about the same parcel. You're on a parcel, and they're going to review that parcel now. If there's a place that they, out of, they say, the eighty-two sites, we have seven that qualified, and they're going to review the other eighty-two, they, it's up to them to determine whether or not they can provide the housing for those that they're reviewing.
Brian, are we meeting, we're meeting with them tomorrow, right?
Yes.
In the morning?
Nine, nine.
Wednesday?
Nine, yes. Uh, nine, nine, one.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're continuing to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
And then, like I mentioned, I, I met with the fire chiefs last Wednesday, you know, last Wednesday, and they were critiquing everything that they wanted to critique amongst themselves, and it was pretty interesting to listen to what they had to say about things there. Everybody had different aspects of this giant thing that happened, that I think rests on every, all the emergency services is questioning, "What can we do better, as good as we did?" So, they, the fire chiefs are very much a part of being interested in anything that comes up that requires emergency services, they're on board. They want to be part of it. This is their community, too, they made that very clear. And CAL FIRE has been part of these meetings, and they've been exceptional. There's a good partnership with the fire chiefs. One last thing I'd like to mention as a point of caution, when you have solar arrays on a roof, or a solar ground mount system, those may be on the ground, and what people need to understand by going back on their properties, don't touch those things. They're energized. They're, just because, they're off the grid, or not on the grid, those things are still producing high voltage. So, the, if you walk up and grab a hold of a solar panel, that might be the last thing you ever touch. So, that's a real, I don't think, those are one of those millions of little things out there that people may not be aware of, but I think it's worth mentioning here, that if, if you see solar panels on the ground, don't go near them. They could be energized.
The house may be gone, but.
Yeah, the solar, the solar's still cooking right along. So, if you have any questions, I'm free to answer the, any questions you would like to pose to me.
Any question? Jeff, when you talked about the fire chiefs, they have their own particular fire codes in regards to building codes.
Actually, the, we have the California Fire Code, which is adopted through the California amendments of the California Code of Regulations, so we do, and a lot of that is designed to, for commercial. The other part of it is the residential fire code, or no, the residential res, code for the Code of Regulations and the building code. So, all of these are, all twelve of these volumes are connected. So all of these are, uh, all twelve of these volumes are connected to each other. So they rely on the building department to, uh, get all of this taken care of, of that, whatever particular issues are in regards to construction. Water supply and access is their chief concerns.
Have you thought, or is there, um, an association within the kind of building industry? I know there has been in the past, but what I hear a lot of is that, you know, someone who built their home in the sixty, seventies or, you know, bought a home that was built a while ago, um, to rebuild, you know, the codes are very different today as they were, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ago. So is there, like, we're hearing about workshops on insurance and the questions to ask and workshops on, you know, rebuilding. Do you know of anything in the industry happening for your area?
I, I've been told that I should expect a visit from the Board of Forestry because the Board of Forestry does, uh, write the, what we call the forty-two ninety and the forty-two ninety-one, which are the laws for vegetation and construction, which has to do with fire resistant and fire resistant, uh, construction and materials and clearances to the property, driveway slope and access, uh, hard surfaces on the driveways, all the things that give people, uh, a no chance to win when they're not done correctly. So, most of these houses, I'm sure, were built, who knows when, but probably quite a few of them before the nineteen, uh, well, the two thousand and eight codes came in with a fire resistant construction. We had an opportunity to look at some of those that survived and whether it was strictly with the construction type or not, I'd have to say there's a high probability that the, that the, the codes in place at the time had an effect on the survivability. But this fire was, uh, thirty thousand and eight acres in one day, is not going to be impressed by very many codes, so it's a catch as catch can. But we do believe that the codes are heading in the right direction for passive protection.
So I'm just, I guess I'm looking for education, you know, USDA has had this workshop and, you know, people are having workshops and I just haven't seen anything, you know, and it's kind of early now, I know, but kind of planning in the future for those who want to, you know, rebuild and can rebuild, what they're going to be, um, kind of faced with because the codes are so different now than they were ten, twenty years ago.
That's correct, and we can't use codes, obviously, that are not, no longer in existence, so we use the current code. And then I'll go back to the reason that I met with the, um, the engineers and the designers and the architects and some, some contractors, is so we all understand what those design criteria will be for a successful future in construction in these highs, in extremely high severity fire zones.
Yeah, okay.
So the professionals that are putting the package together will include all those elements that, um, are recognized by the code for passive fire protection.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure those sprinklers would have done a great job on this fire.
Well, the sprinklers are designed to allow you to get out in a fire that would be inside and you have to, you know, there are almost no deaths in the United States of America in any occupied building where the sprinkler systems operated properly, almost none. Conversely, where sprinklers are not in interior buildings, we lose maybe six thousand people a year in the United States because of dying in their homes during a fire. Where do they go? They go to the place they came in from and they may not have any way to get out, they may not think about those things. The sprinkler system will allow you, under most, almost every condition, the opportunity to get out and save your life. That's what the current California code is, um, designed to do. So it allows for a certain amount of flow, for a certain amount of time to allow people to get out safely. And if, I'm considering putting sprinklers in my house just because of that reason. I've got all the other stuff in place for, you know, if I, if another wildland fire event takes place, but we do the best we can with, and you have to know about this stuff to make, or it doesn't make sense.
Right.
So I think, uh, the sprinklers were met with a lot of opposition, but the, in California, the, uh, fire chief, the, the State Farm Marshal's o, office was tasked with this, to do this and two, and it came into the two thousand and ten code. And that's a code, that's part of the codes that we have right now. So it's, uh, exterior construction gives you the chance when impinging flame lengths come up onto the building. So if you've got the right construction for the amount of time that you're going to, and you've got the clearance, you've got no vegetation, you clear that stuff out of the way, you remove the fuel or the oxygen or the heat, the fire goes out. And sometimes they'll say if you remove the fire chief, the fire go out. But at any point, the more things that you get out of the way that'll burn, these, and I saw it firsthand out there, these houses that had clearance were safe, no problem whatsoever. It's got a little warm around there, but I was at those houses when the fire went around them.
Another question that has been raised is that, um, you know, making PG&E put everything underground, um, probably can't do it from a, from their public wires, but when it's on somebody's prop, on their property, is there a code that encourages to be, I mean, you've got to have the pole there, but after that, underground? Or is that kind of an owner preference?
No, that, they can, they can hang them in the air. Uh, we have, uh, actually what we do is when it hits the meter head and at the meter, that's where we take over, that's building department inspections at the meter head.
Okay.
And, and then beyond that is all the, whoever provides the, uh, the electrical service, which would be in this case PG&E. So there, there's, uh, there's real need to keep the wires a certain height above driveways for obvious reasons and above the ground for obvious reasons where people are walking, those sorts of things. So that, that's all in the, in the code, but the, if they put them underground, which is a good idea, then we do have standards by which we inspect that.
Okay, and then on the power pole, so it's my understanding that people are paying the permit for their power pole on their property, um, and then PG&E is called out to put the pole in. Can a private person put their own pole in if they meet PG&E standards or?
Yes, the, the Business and Profession Code does allow a homeowner to work on their own property and they could make that installation. We would still inspect it for compliance.
Sure.
So if it's not an electrical contractor or somebody who has the discipline for that installation, then the homeowner is, can do that if he does it right. So that's a, that is out there. And what we're looking for is a lot of things in these poles that are, to meet the, the certain depth, it has to be so, you know, when somebody climbs up and it doesn't tip over and, and the type of the, the panel, the wire, you know, the grounding, all the things that make it a safe installation.
Right.
So I think they're able to get a, if they buy a power pole, they're probably able to get one for fifteen hundred bucks or something like that setup. And if they get an electrician to do it, it might be another five hundred to do the work.
Sure.
So anywhere from twelve, fourteen hundred to two thousand dollars is what they're going to pay for that.
There are options.
Yes.
Okay, because I understand PG&E is on overload two now, so many of these crews have gone home and it's local crews and there's, you know, somewhere around five, six hundred permits and, um.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that if it got to be an urgent need, that some kind of a request could bring a few of them back to make these, make up for that.
But people can still, i.e. meeting code, people can still do the work on their own.
Well, plus PG&E to come back and make the connections and let their safe to go.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's about two hundred and fifty bucks for the hole, twelve hundred for the pole and, uh, and the box.
Mm-hmm.
And then a hundred and sixty-six for the.
The permit, yeah. So if you're going to do it yourself, you could expect to be out about that much money to, to do it yourself. And then if you hire an electrician, which most people are doing, um, they, they supply the material and put the thing up and make the calls and come in and get the permit and you go home and you got a, a certified pole in the ground with a green tag in it to hook it up.
Let's get you water.
Yeah, because the well's not working and there's a lot of them out there. So bringing up the wells in the, and, uh, the septic, we will want to, and Jason didn't come back, we want to make sure that we have coordinated effort between them, that, that their sewer and water is, you, we got things out there that are not going to hurt anybody. You don't want to drink bad water, you don't want your discharge to go in places where it shouldn't go. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure that the environment they return to is, is properly cleaned up and safe.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
Any, uh, public comments, questions from the public?
I'll be quick. I just wanted to update you where, uh, Calvers County Fairgrounds is with FEMA Housing. I have met with eight different sets of FEMA folks and they say I will probably meet with eight more sets of FEMA folks. And we're all in, I mean, we're, the board at our last board meeting said, yes, Lori, whatever, whatever we need to do to make it work, we're going to make it work. We can put somewhere between sixteen and twenty units there in the RV park. Uh, we'll have to do some improvement to the infrastructure, but it's a good time to do the improvements. So, um, I asked FEMA the last time they were in, you know, what the timeframe would be and they said, once they decided, um, then it could be seven days to forty-five days before we would actually see movement. So, anyway, we're there, we're available, we're ready to go, um, we want to serve in that way. We actually have five families now living in RVs that are displaced residents in the RV park and, and, um, they seem to be happy. Um, and in addition, just a little update, we still have seven horses and one rooster. So, we're trying to get everybody home, thank you.
Thanks.
You're going to have a hard time getting rid of that rooster.
Yeah.
Take it, my neighbor.
So I didn't fall asleep almost, um, but two, so I'm going to, I'll try to be within my five minutes. One is, as former probation officer, you know, there's a bunch of people sitting in jail and/or on probation that could be utilized, maybe that has mattered, of course. So hopefully we think about that, I tried to get more, uh, community service going, but the former board was, you know, it has to do with money, so whatever. So, but think about that, you've got a workforce that has to do community service or is sitting in the jail that is, um, you know, lower risk, but, or, because there's a jail now where people could spend some time.
We need you to come back and run those crews.
Love it. But, uh, but another thing, you know, just to remind you all too, you probably all know and not as a, not a health, mental health professional, probably need it, um, but as a, I've taken a lot of grief issue classes, was a grief buster, did that for a while, but, you know, the, the whole grief cycle is denial, anger, I think you saw some anger from one of the victims here now, and that's, that's all right, we're all feeling that. You just have to realize where you are in that, in that cycle. And the last one is the actualization and moving on, so just try to get there. And it's not necessarily going to be quick, but, so take some time to breathe. But what I want to do now is, and the other thing Calveras grown is worried about is you're talking about, well, if we ever have, if we will have another fire. What we're really worried about is the poor maintenance we've done on our wildlands. And if we want to live out here, then we've got to start having some will, political, social, financial will to start cleaning up because there's still, how much, how many more acres are in the county to that, you know, because, and this, a lot of this.
Two-thirds more, there's two-thirds more acres.
Yeah, so, but anyway, so one of the things, we've been going to people's houses at no cost, just first come, first served, we're going to help you. We don't care if you're rich, poor, whatever, we're, if you ask, we're, we're going to go, go there. And it's not necessarily Calveras grown, like I said earlier, it was, you know, my son's farm, so I'm kind of, it's kind of fun working for my son. But anyway, uh, so our last person that we did some work on, she wrote this little thing and she says, is she posted it to us, it was like a, you know, thank you note. "The cavalry has arrived, just like in those old westerns, that's the relief we felt." So weak on this. "When Sean and his international erosion control team showed up on our property Thursday morning, even while our introductions were being made, Sean was evaluating our property and needs and in no time it all got everyone to work." Sorry, I don't get angry, I'm just, I just fall for it. But anyway, so his crew was made up of volunteers from Amador, that was kind of nice, uh, Calveras Counties, as well as Europe and Israel. So we knew we needed to start preparing up our burned land for the upcoming rains, but weren't, were certain, weren't certain which approach was the best, you know, and wisest to take. "Thanks to Sean's guidance and everyone's hard work, we were feeling more optimistic on our way to helping our land recover. You lifted our spirits and we will forever be grateful and never forget your kindness and hard work." So, anyway, the thing is, people need to get back, they need to get hope and, so.
So, uh, Mike.
Do it. Go ahead, sorry.
That, uh, I'm glad you feel that way.
Yeah.
Because that is, uh, you're into it, you're in it and I appreciate that.
Yeah, so.
I appreciate that.
You know, and some people, they just want to, you know, it's okay, it's okay, sorry, County Council, it's okay to hug. You know, I mean, it's just, it, it, it's just, anyway, so thanks for the work you do because this is a tough situation, but, anyway, take, take it.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Who's left?
Uh, before Jeff gets away though, thanks for your department and what they've done.
Thank you.
I know, uh, when we were at the MAC meetings, you all hit the ground running, uh, you put, put a lot of energy forward and want to recognize that and I do appreciate it, Jeff.
Thank you, I appreciate your recognition, love. I'm not done yet, I'm going to continue.
Well, we know.
Well, I want to thank all the department heads for, and the board and everybody for doing such a great job. I want to thank the Thirty-Ninth Agricultural District, where he's shop for doing such a phenomenal job, especially with, um, especially with all the animals and you might, might be in the modular business here very soon. So that's really terrific, um, good, good things happening. I wanted to clarify for the record, Cliff had asked me about a meeting, I said nine AM, that would be correct. What I did also say was one till one PM, that's a different meeting. So usually these meetings only go for about an hour, I will not be at that meeting in the morning, Mary Rose from Administration will be there as I have another engagement. The meeting we're talking about is a quick update that I meet with FEMA and Cal OES on Wednesdays and Fridays at nine AM. So, um, I asked, actually asked Supervisor Edson if he'd like to join us, that he was certainly more than welcome. There are also other meetings that occur down at the, uh, Area Office down at old Calveras Title, but that's for FEMA and Cal OES, et cetera, et cetera. So with that said, I just want to clarify for the record and, um.
Say that again, Brian?
That is the, uh, Area Field Office down at, um.
That one's at what time?
That is at eight-thirty on Mondays and, um, nine on Thursdays. The nine o'clock is really for department heads that are your leaders that are reporting on the EEIs to report out in part and then they report out again, um, on the following Monday. So, because as, as you see with Jason's shop, things are changing daily, sometimes hourly. And especially with those right of entries, um, those are just, just every day I see that go up by fifteen, twenty or thirty, thirty notices, which is great. But it's, it's really a moving target, you've heard that all along. So, um, just so you know, there's a lot of work, a lot of activity going on behind the scenes, we're going to do our best as the administrative office to make sure that the local governing body is aware of everything that we can, that, that we're aware of, if you will. Some of, some, some of the things that we hear out in the community or that some of the board members have heard out in the community, we haven't heard yet. So you're kind of our eyes and ears as well. And, uh, so with that said, I just wanted to, uh, to reiterate that, you know, one of our missions is to make sure you guys are all informed about what's going on. And I think we're making progress, I really do. I'm very, very, very pleased to see because it's, uh, it's been quite a challenge and, and everybody's really stepped up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody?
All right, so that, that concludes that agenda, Iden. Oh, no, we got you, huh?
Yeah, actually, um, uh, the board, at the, at last Tuesday, um, at least I, I heard a majority of the board direct, um, direct me and ask for information on our code and on the EOP. And, um, so. And, um, so I, that, that information was gonna be wrapped into the discussion today on the update of the Butte Fire. And so I wanted to, um, it's, it's really gonna be somewhat of a historical, um, discussion as well, um, regarding our code. And, um, so I wanted to start with, um, in, in, I created a timeline and I'm gonna be referencing some documents, I handed all the documents that I'll be referencing out to the board. I did place copies up on this table here in case anybody in the public would like to get a copy of them. Um, but to begin, um, in nineteen seventy, um, the state passed the California Emergency Services Act, and that act is specifically found in the government code, starting at eight-five-five-zero, and then it goes on from there. Um, in, in that section, um, or in that act, the state really, um, was looking to confer a lot of pow- emergency powers, um, on both the executive chief and the political body of both the state and local jurisdictions to allow, um, governmental entities to, um, to plan for disasters. And one of the provisions of the act allows for the creation of disaster councils, and, um, it allows for, for the creation of disaster councils, and the purpose of the disaster council is to create emergency plans to be used in times of emergencies. Um, part of the act also was very clear in, in that there's supposed to be a shared emergency power of the, of, of the executive and the legislative branch of the government. And county government, the executive branch is the CAO's office, the legislative branch is the board. Um, so that is, um, those were some of the, the primary purposes of the act that, when it was, when it was adopted back in nineteen seventy. Um, one of the things that, that the act does provide also is, um, when an emergency is, um, so extreme that the local jurisdiction can't handle it within the local jurisdiction, and you need to seek outside assistance, such as, as what we are dealing with with the Butte Fire. And in the act, it does provide that, um, when, um, when a state of emergency is declared and you need outside aid, um, the aid shall be rendered in accordance with the approved emergency plan. And that is something that, that I would like everybody to remember is that because we are seeking outside assistance, the local, the, the emergency plan is, um, is, is the plan that, that should be followed per the state, state law. Um, now, in nineteen seventy, um, that was what was adopted at the state level. Um, in nineteen seventy-one, the Calaveras Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance that was related to emergency services. I did not include a copy of that ordinance in nineteen, from nineteen seventy-one, because the board turned around in nineteen seventy-five and repealed it. Um, when they repealed it in nineteen seventy-five, they adopted ordinance seven sixty-six, um, which is, um, which is over here and which the board has. The ordinance, uh, seven sixty-six from nineteen seventy-five, um, created our, or amended our chapter two point seven-two, and it is how it, our code is written today. So, our code is from nineteen seventy-five. Um, I want to go back to what I had previously said about the executive and legislative branches from what the state had, had adopted. And in nineteen seventy-one and in nineteen seventy-five, Calaveras County did not have an office of administration, we did not have a CAO. Um, so really, the board functioned in a much more, um, involved, they were, they were much more involved at the time. And one of the things that the, um, that the California Emergency Services Act does provide is, is situations when there isn't a CAO, um, that the board can delegate certain powers to one board member versus the CAO. And, um, and state law vers- it, it would, it applied to the code when it was written in seventy-one and seventy-five, because we didn't have a CAO. Um, in nineteen eighty-nine, the board, uh, the board adopted, uh, ordinance establishing the position of CAO and establishing the office of administration. So, um, in nineteen eighty-nine, we, the county did get a CAO. Um, there are areas of our code that, um, as written, it, um, it specifically delegated or identified the director of emergency services as the chair of the board, and that is something that, that is still currently in our code. Um, we also created the disaster council, and all of that was very much in line with the, um, California Emergency Services Act. When the, in, in eighty-nine, when the CAO position was created, um, our code was not revisited, um, to address different functions from the board chair being the director of emergency services to administration. And, um, however, in eighty-nine, from what I've been able to gather through, um, reviewing old documents and reaching out to various people who were in local government at the time, trying to gather information to present to the board, um, from what I've been able to gather, the, um, when the CAO position was created, it specifically called out that it, the CAO was to function as the chief administrative officer, which is a key term in, in the state law. Um, and at that time, OES was placed under the administrative office, um, but there was, there was nothing that was changed in our code to delegate anything or to change anything as far as who the director of emergency services was. Um, so the day-to-day operations of OES was in administration. Um, and in the early nineteen nineties, the MAC was formed. And the MAC is the multi-agency coordinating group. Um, it was, it's unfortunate that I, I have not been able to find, um, clear documentation on when the MAC was, was created, there's been a lot of supporting documentation of reference to it. Um, there is an MOU that, from what I understand, was entered into, and, um, you'll see from, from the, the cover sheet of that, um, it indicates that the MAC is, um, the, the MAC is to be, is to act as the Calaveras, um, county disaster council. Um, there is, since then, the MAC has functioned as the disaster council. Um, through all of the plans, the MAC is referred to, um, and has, um, brings forward the, the emergency plan, the adopted emergency plan. For instance, in, um, in our code, it talks about, um, our code, it talks about the duties of the disaster, um, council. And the primary function of it is to review, um, come together, develop a plan, and bring that plan forward for the board to, to adopt. Um, and the MAC has, has done that in our current, um, EOP. It actually is part of the EOP, and it, and it clearly lays out the functions of the MAC in the EOP mirror the functions of the disaster council. So in practice, the MAC has been functioning since the early nineties as the disaster In nineteen ninety-four, the board adopted a resolution, um, appointing Clay Hawkins as a deputy director of emergency services. Um, he worked very hands-on at the time, he was under the administration office, um, he was very hands-on, um, in the office of admin, of emergency services. And in nineteen ninety-six, the board actually appointed Mr. Hawkins as the director of emergency services per, uh, resolution ninety-six four oh one. Um, I did provide, um, resolu- that resolution as well, because that was the resolution appointing him as the director of emergency services, um, rather than just the deputy. At that time, uh, Mr. Hawkins was still working within the administration office. Um, he was in the administration office from, uh, the, the point that he was appointed as director, all the way until two thousand and two, and from what I've been able to gather, he then went, um, he and the office of emergency services, uh, was moved to the sheriff's office. Um, he, he oversaw the office of emergency services up at the sheriff's office for multiple years. Um, and I did wanna note that in two thousand and eight, the state legislature adopted, um, additional laws that created the state, um, the state OES. So we do have the state OES that was formed in two thousand and eight, and then we have local OES, and, and, and the importance of the, the interchange between those two agencies is, is critical, and that's why when the state or outside agencies are, um, resources are sought by outside agencies, including the state, that our emergency plan kicks in, because then it, 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 um, coordinates all of those things. In two thousand and ten, Mr. Hawkins returned to the county administrative office, and, um, but from what we, he, he returned to the administrative office, but the office of emergency services remained under the sheriff's office management. Um, from what I've been able to, to, to gather, there was no formal appointment of a successor by the board after that. Um, and because there was no formal appointment to a posi- to somebody into that position, since his, his, since Mr. Hawkins, um, leaving the office of emergency services, it would revert back to what our current code says, which is the chair. Um, so OES continues to be up, the, the office of emergency services continues to be up at the sheriff's office, um, and that is to today, um, the sheriff's office does oversee OES at this point. Um, in two thousand and eleven, OES, um, worked with the MAC, did, um, an update to our emergency operating plan, or I refer to it as the EOP. Um, and that EOP was taken to the MAC, the MAC vetted it, they made recommendations, and that plan was brought to the board in December of two thousand and eleven, and the board adopted that EOP as the official plan of the county. Um, and that is the emergency operating plan that has been functioning for us through this disaster. Um, so the two thousand and eleven plan, um, like I had said, i- is what all agencies, whether it's our local agencies, local departments, local, um, um, special districts, everybody who, who are affected, who are listed in the EOP, are working, are working collaboratively through the plan that the board adopted in two thousand and eleven. Some of the things, um, one of the things that the board did ask for is for some information about the EOP as well. Um, and in, and I did print some of the pages of the EOP, it is a very lengthy document. Um, but for purposes of the, today's discussion, I wanted to, um, to point out a few things within the EOP. And in the EOP, there, you'll see, um, a chart, it is the Calaveras County responsibilities and supporting organizations, and there are these charts for various types of, of disasters in the E, in the EOP. Um, there is one specific for wildland fires, and so obviously that is the one during response that, that would be utilized. Um, and I wanted to point out that the primary function of the board is the emergency declaration. And so, um, that is the, uh, the very important part and involvement of the board in a disaster like wildland fires for, um, for the, for the overall management and the declaration, because the declaration provides for additional resources, it provides for a variety of other things that, um, that when disaster is so significant that we need all of those additional resources, that's one of the trigger points, and that's what the board did. Um, but I did find that that was a very interesting chart that kind of laid out, um, primary and secondary or supporting agencies for various roles within the initial response, within, um, the, the general, um, extended response of the, of the disaster. Now, under the, um, under the EOP, it references the EOC director, and it also references the, um, the director of, um, OES. There are some areas of the EOP where they are, they are, it appears that they might be one and the same, or that they are essentially to assist one another or work collaboratively to, together to oversee the management of a portion of the EOP or the implementation of the EOP. Um, according to the EOP, the EOC director, the primary is the sheriff, the alternate is the county administrative officer, um, as I indicated earlier, because the board has not appointed a director of emergency services, um, after Mr. Hawkins left the office of emergency services, it would revert back to the board chair. Um, so since we would have two different people in, one, the, uh, the EOC director and one, the director of emergency services, um, they would work collaboratively together, um, in the functions where, um, where they referenced together throughout the plan. I did print off two, um, two of the sections regarding the MAC, and it is just additional supporting documentation to show the, um, the intention and the past practices and the history of the MAC and the MAC functioning as a disaster council. Um, in the board adopted EOP, the MAC is specifically mentioned. And in that, it, it, it's, it's a, it indicates the MAC consists of key public safety and supporting agencies responsible for county-wide emergency response planning and incident coordination. Um, the responsibility of the MAC is to review and recommend for adoption by the board of supervisors, emergency mutual aid plans and agreements, and that is the duties of the disaster council. It doesn't specifically reference the disaster council in the EOP, but the, the purpose and the duties of the MAC, um, mirror what the disaster council does. Um, and, and the EOP also lists the, the primary and, uh, the primary agencies that are part of MAC, and, um, and that is included as well, um, for your, for your review. Okay, um, so I wanted to also remind the board and the community as a whole that we are in, as long as we're working in the EOP, we have an emergency. We have an emergency situation, whether we are in the initial response stage, whether we are in the extended response stage, or we're, whether we're in the recovery, recovery stage. Recovery is still, uh, an emergency, and recovery is still responding to the disaster, responding to the emergency. And, um, part four of the EOP is the recovery- And Part IV of the EOP is the recovery operations, and that is primarily where we are at this point in the process. Under the EOP, Part IV, recovery operations, it indicates that the recovery operations will be managed and directed by the CAO. And the CAO is to work with designated representatives. It does indicate that the Office of Emergency Services Director will assist the CAO in facilitating and leading the recovery process. So although the CAO is responsible through Part IV for managing and directing this aspect of the EOP, there is, the CAO would work collaboratively, and the Chair would help assist the CAO in facilitating the process. Finally, like I indicated, in the recovery process, there are short-term recovery goals and long-term recovery goals, and the EOP goes through that as well. And right now, because of what everybody heard, all of the various departments coming up and giving updates, it would indicate that we're still in the short-term recovery. We are in the short-term recovery of the EOP with hopes to move into the long-term recovery. And I also included the page in the EOP that discusses short-term versus long-term. Under short-term recovery, the goal is, the short-term goals include utility restoration, expanded social, medical, and mental health services, re-establishment of Calaveras County government operations, transportation routes, debris removal, cleanup operations, abatement and demolition of hazardous structures. So we're clearly right in the throes of that, making efforts, we're progressing, and we're making very good progress in the short-term recovery goals. And once those short-term recovery goals are met, then we would be moving into the long-term, the long-term recovery goals, which is to restore facilities to pre-disaster condition. Other long-term recovery goals include hazard mitigation activities, restoration or reconstruction of public facilities, and disaster response cost recovery. So certainly, all of the affected departments, it appears that we are still primarily in the short-term recovery, with certain things focused on long-term as well. But that is where we are to date. The EOP is a working document, it is the Board-approved document, it is what all county departments and all officials should be following. And that is really, that wraps it up for my purposes of informing the Board of our current code. Our current code is that we still are working out of 1975. I do believe that there are some areas of our code. In practice, we have followed updates in state law, we have, in practice, followed, we've made changes in practice but haven't gone back to update the code from 1975. I do recommend that the Board consider looking at that and bring it up to state standards, whatever that may look like. I just want to make sure that it meets state standards. But in practice, we have historically been, we have been following state standards, and our EOP shows that, and our EOP is the plan that is what's being followed and should continue to be followed at this point through the response and recovery of this disaster.
Thanks, Megan.
Did you get all that?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat it back here. Just give me that tape.
So do you have any questions for me?
I do, Megan, I do. From what I understand, you were not involved as County Council in any of this prior to being appointed County Council. Is that correct?
Well, I was not involved in the drafting of the EOP, that was before I came to the county.
I understand.
And that, no, I have not been involved. I've been involved in the implementation of the EOP through the disaster, to the extent that I have a role per the plan to do.
And you were not involved in any MOU or anything that happened in 96, 75, or anything like that?
Seventy-five, I don't think she was born yet, was she?
I was a twinkle in my mother's eye in seventy-five.
Just wanted to clear the air.
But no, I was not, I personally was not involved, but I'm sure that our office was in some capacity.
All right.
No, no, they may not have had counselors back then. The lawyers were the first position.
That could be, huh?
So I see the, at least in one spot, it says every three years, the entire emergency operation plan will be reviewed, updated, published, and distributed. So I take it that that's overdue, and we should probably.
That is, that is something that I have through this process, and that was something that was, that our office has discussed with OES. And it is something, they are updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan currently. The EOP is just one of many emergency operating, the EOP is the emergency operating plan. There are multiple emergency plans that are adopted by the Board, but the EOP is what would be followed here. And yes, it would be something that we would need to look at and potentially revise. I don't believe that it would be prudent to revise it in the middle of implementing it.
Might be a good time. No, it's not a good time.
But certainly, it should be updated and looked at.
So what is, what does Clay Hawkins' position, what is his position right now?
He is no longer with the county, he left the county in 2013, I believe.
Retired, I believe.
Yes, I believe he retired.
Will we bring him back for extra hire?
We have brought him back as extra hire, and he's overseeing the operations, the operations which is above the four task force.
And where does that, where does that fit in, where does that fit in this chart?
That chart is just for the, in the EOP, there are various charts. And there are various organizational charts. And in the planning, in the planning meetings they have, they have been able to use the information in all, in the various parts of the plan to create the working structure. So what was presented to the Board last week may be a little different than this specifically.
Right.
And this is, this chart here that you were referring to, which is the EOC Director handout, is more of a general organizational chart to show where the EOC Director falls in line with the various other departments.
So Clay Hawkins is just kind of an invented position based on the current on-the-ground kind of need?
Are you talking about, existing right now?
Because there's operations in my notes, so this is what we had the last meeting. So we have Clay Hawkins up here at operations, but is, that's just kind of like, well, it's, we need to put him somewhere, so we'll create a box here?
It wasn't just so that we can put him somewhere. When we meant in the recovery effort planning to set up the organizational structure in accordance with the EOP, there is an IC or an Incident Commander, and that is the Assistant CAO that oversees it. Under that box, there is logistics, there's, pardon me, finance, et cetera, and then, and operations. And then under operations are the task force that you see there.
So that's what, so this, so that does follow this chart then?
It does, but.
Because these operations, it would be.
That one is for the MAC. There's also one, if you notice, that talks about operations for the EOC while the EOC is going on, which is different. And then, yeah, and that's under the EOC, so, and I assume, I could look in the book and find a similar chart for recovery.
Okay.
So it's not really a made-up position.
Well, I'm not saying like.
It is the structure that is the standard structure for disaster recovery. And it was, because we have limited resource, limited staff, we brought Clay Hawkins back in as extra hire to fit into that box because he has been here before, he knows the county, he's been through the disaster as the Director of Emergency Operations. We thought that it would give us those additional resources and knowledge of not only the process but the county itself.
And just so the Board is aware, there is, like Shirley indicated, an organizational chart for recovery operations. I was going to make a copy of it, but unfortunately, I made the copy of the wrong side of the piece of paper, and I apologize. But for anybody who is interested, it is Page 313 of the Emergency Operations Plan. And on it, it indicates that there's special districts, the recovery management, and in that box, it indicates that it's the County Administrative Officer, and then below the County Administrative Officer, there's operations, planning, intelligence, logistics, and finance and administration.
So where's the Board of Supervisors and all that?
We're up here. No, actually, we're not anywhere on there.
Yes, you are.
We do one thing, and then we're done.
Is that it?
Yep.
The general management, the general management is the Board. The Board does oversee various things. The primary purpose of the Board in implementing the emergency, the operating plan, the Emergency Operations Plan, is declaring the emergency. And then from there, the Emergency Operating Plan does designate to various departments and various entities their responsibilities and their role in responding.
In theory.
That is the plan.
Is it your feeling, Megan?
Not that, in theory.
That the code we have in place for the disaster council is not compliant with current state law? Because, I mean, after the last meeting, I really didn't see creating the disaster council taking away from the hard work that had already been done. And that wasn't my purpose for even bringing it up.
The disaster council is in place. It's just, in practice, it's been the MAC that has functioned in that capacity. As far as our current code, our current code, because it was drafted prior to the Administrative Office being created, it does designate a lot of powers in the Director of Emergency Services that according to the California Emergency Services Act, it does indicate in that act that if a jurisdiction has a County Administrative Officer, the County Administrative Officer is to be tasked with certain things. And only if a county has no CAO may the Board delegate these single tasks to a single Board member. So there are things within our code that I believe we, again, we have in practice been following this. We've been following this because certain things have been moved into, responsibilities have been moved into the Administrative Office after it was created. But I do believe that our '75 code should be updated to dovetail with the Emergency Services Act as well as with the changes. I mean, the structure of the county has changed since '75. And so our code needs to be updated to dovetail with the changes in the county structure as well. Whatever that may look like is up to the Board, the Board can, does have a lot of flexibility. But the way our code is currently written versus the way that it's been used in practice, the language should be updated to match the practice.
That's one of our problems. Well, before I relinquish my microphone to you, Mike.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, don't apologize, I'm not mad. After the last meeting, I kind of went out of here a little confused and not knowing what had happened, actually. And so I did some research in other like counties, and one, two, three, four, five. At five, I just kind of gave up because they all had, or didn't give up, but just stopped looking because they all had disaster councils, and they all looked similar to ours. And my reason for bringing it up last time was, to me, that I haven't, I don't see a disaster council here. The disaster council involves a lot of different elements, and it doesn't take away from the work that has already been done. Like a lot of these counties, they ask for someone, the Superintendent of Schools to be involved, the Fire Department, somebody from the Fire Department, and certainly law enforcement. And the Chairman of the Board is, shares, in most of the counties, shares the authority with the Sheriff in bringing these things forward. And it's more like a, I don't know, what did you say, the supervisor up here? It's more like a advisory council to what is going on, and to me, that seems like it's missing.
Now, keep in mind that the term disaster council is going to be used in most all jurisdictions because that is the term that's used in state law.
Correct.
So regardless of the function or the form, they're going to use the term disaster council in their code.
So you looked at the makeup of it, was it similar to what our code was?
Yeah, Tuolumne County, Amador County, Alpine, Lake County, and Siskiyou County. The Amador County was done in 2005, Siskiyou, 1973, Lake, 1996, Alpine, '96, Tuolumne's, '95.
Now, again, the term disaster council is something that would be used and coined in any code. And from, it's my understanding that in the early '90s, when the MAC was created as a multi-agency coordinating group, it's just a different term of art that has become another tool that a lot of jurisdictions use at the state and federal level as well. And under our EOP, the MAC, it actually lists the primary agencies in the MAC as the County Sheriff's Office, California Highway Patrol, US Forest Service, PG&E, Calaveras County OES, Calaveras County Administrative Officer, California Department of Forestry, Calaveras County Water District, Caltrans, and the City of Angels Camp. So that is in our EOP, and that is, those are the primary entities that are, that form the MAC. And like I indicated, that in practice, the MAC has functioned as the disaster council. Our code lists certain things in the, in what the makeup of the disaster council is, and for all intents and purposes, the MAC does fit very much into what the disaster council could be. And so in function, it has acted as that, as that MOU indicated also, and as past practices indicated in prior disasters, that the MAC has convened, all of these players have worked collaboratively together with all, the whole point of the MAC is for all of these various agencies, the multi-agency coordinating group, to come together to create the emergency operating plan so everybody can work together, work collaboratively, to respond to an emergency when needed. I do have, our current code, which is 2.72, it can be found on the website, the disaster council, the disaster council is made up of the Chairman of the Board, a Vice Chair, and then such chiefs of emergency services as are provided for in the current emergency plan of the county, county, so that would be our EOP, such chiefs of emergency services as provided for in a current emergency plan of the county, it's redundant. They, C and D. C and D wanted to really make sure that. They, C and D, C and D wanted to really make sure that it was the Chief Emergency Services provided in the EOP. And E is such representatives of civic, business, labor, veterans, professional, and other organizations having an official emergency responsibility, as may be appointed by the Board of Supervisors as a whole. And so that is what our county code currently says as far as who the Disaster Council is. In our Emergency Operating Plan, the MAC has been, is that, and those are the key players that the board adopted when they approved this Emergency Operating Plan in 2011 as the official Emergency Operating Plan of the county.
Okay.
Just a real quick comment, if I may. For somebody who's been here a long time, the MAC has functioned in the past. I've sat on three different disasters. There was Darby-Leonard, and I can't say I sat on a local, take that back. So it was Darby and Leonard. And for those incidents, we were out at the old EOC, which was at the airport. And it did have all those representatives, actually, and more that Megan is speaking of. I can't speak for when the MAC was meeting necessarily on, as an example, they've got a winter update coming up, and I'm not sure who that's going to, who's that going to comprise. But I do know, I noticed one out the other day from the SO's office, but I will say in the past, in my experience, it's worked very well because you have the multiple and multidiscipline approach. And it's true, I know that in addition to CalFire and CalOES, CHP, SO, City of Angels, multiple jurisdictions are involved and have been involved, and that's been, always been a very good approach. So I just want to speak from a history standpoint, personally sitting at those long, long meetings in the past for those two incidences, so. It's just FYI.
I can appreciate that. My concern is, I mean, I lived in Tuolumne County during the complex fires, and that was 170,000-plus acres, but it was only 28 structures that burned. And it's a disaster to lose the timber and to lose the wildlands, but this is a completely different situation than anything any of us have ever experienced before. And that's why I think we need to reach a little further and not only, I mean, I hope in my lifetime this never, ever happens again, but I think we need to establish, you know, where we're going from here with it a little bit. And I just can't compare this to some of the past things that we've dealt with.
Chances are, great, it's going to happen again. We don't even know what's going to come up when we start getting these rains. You know, we can speculate on that, but we don't really know. And, I mean, I've listened to CalFire, I've listened to the OES folks, and I've listened to Jeff. And Jeff was scared to death. You know, he's not scared to death, but, I mean, he's preparing for the absolute emergency for that because that's, we had, what, half an rain this last time? About a half an inch? And we already had some debris flows and a couple of mudslides. If it dumps like it did down in LA on Jesus Maria or any of the burned areas, it's not going to be another little drill. It's going to be another major incident. And, you know, I think that we should probably bear that in mind. Plus, we get another fire somewhere that's similar to where this one started, or even anywhere, actually. You know, if it's over here on Bear Mountain, we're going to get the same thing. It's going to roll fast, and we're going to get the same thing because of the underbrush and all of the ladder fuels and everything. And I think it's really important that we, honestly, I think we actually did a pretty good job responding, considering, you know, it was something I think that caught us all by surprise. Nobody expected this. And I think everybody's done a pretty darn good job to it. Can we improve on stuff? Heck, yeah. I think we can.
I don't think anyone thinks any different. I'm proud of the staff. I'm proud of the way we've all worked together. It's just, how do we make this better going on from here?
Yeah. And, you know, paying attention and getting everybody involved and working together is the biggest thing. That's the biggest thing. There were some gaps. We can work through those gaps, but we're not going to do it by creating more gaps or more division.
No.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm Stacy Johnston. I'm the Executive Director for the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce, and I was happy to see that the Chamber of Commerce was listed on the organizations or your supporting organizations in hazards. Another role that I took during this Butte fire was we organized the evacuation center at the Burson Church. And one of the key elements that I'm not seeing in this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is I don't see community in here. And that was huge. The community that stepped up, and we talk about gaps and moving forward. And if it wasn't for your key community individuals and organizations that are not listed in your EOP, I think we would have had a much bigger disaster. And I think it's important that if and when, and when you do get to revising and creating a new plan, that the community needs to be in this from the onset, in my opinion. We had organizations I'm not even seeing on here that stepped up in a huge way, was our Fairgrounds, and they're not on here. We have, you know, with, without, with, throughout Calaveras County, there needs to be specific organizations that are community faith-based organizations that need to be in a plan, that need to be in on some of these meetings to be given specific roles that can be placed on call when a disaster happens because it is going to happen again. And I hate to, you know, to say that, but it is, and I don't want to be caught like we were, just running from, you know, 48 hours in, opening the door with absolutely no idea what we were doing, but we did it. Next time, we want to be prepared. And you can identify those community organizations because we stepped up. There were several that stepped up, and because we love our county, we love our communities as a whole, most of us have born and raised here. So we're here for the long haul. It's not just the response, and then we're going to turn away. We're here for the long-term recovery. So we really want to be involved. And so in saying that, just really visit the opportunity, I will say, to include your community on a much larger scale in your emergency plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, like it or not, you were involved. That was for sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Good question. It was under my impression, I believe I was at a meeting and was told that Mr. Hawkins was hired to revise our EOP. Is that, am I incorrect in that?
He was not hired to revise the EOP. No, you're incorrect. He is strictly working on operations, overseeing the operation and the task forces under Brian for recovery.
Okay, so...
Supervisor Olivera, you may have, there was a consultant that was brought on to do the update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a different plan than the EOP, and that may be what they were talking about.
But that was not Mr. Hawkins.
Okay. Well, I wonder why I would remember that. Has anybody ever submitted a revised EOP in the last 60 days?
The OES has, OES is responsible for the EOP and updating it, reviewing it. Mid-September, an updated EOP was circulated, updating, identifying changes in state agencies, names of state agencies, from what it is in 2011 to what they are today. But it's my understanding that that update was just to update agency names.
Was it an updated, revised, or just updated?
I'm sorry?
Required by law every three years, correct?
According to our plan, our plan is to update it every three years.
And that was last updated in 2011.
Yes.
But...
But that is the current, that is the EOP that is of record, that the board adopted, and it is the EOP that is on file for the county to follow in an emergency situation.
2011's on file.
Correct.
And we weren't able to find any MOUs mentioned in the timeline present, presentation that you provided with us earlier today?
The only MOU, the only MOU was regarding the MAC, and the executed version was from the early '90s. And no, I was not able to locate the executed MOU for the MAC. So that's why I presented all of the supporting documentation as far as past history of the MAC and the purpose of the MAC, and the role and responsibilities of the Disaster Council versus the role and responsibility of the MAC in the current EOP.
We talked before, you had nothing to do with that, did you?
I did not.
So, all right. So I think the, I think the issue is, is the, is the way things went. I mean, I am very happy that we qualified by EOC or OES, right? They aren't giving us any pushback on that, correct? We're good as far as OES goes? All right, I'm good with that. So then I guess it comes down to, how are we going to move forward with it? I don't think that probably we should consider changing anything right now, to tell you the truth, because, you know, we got, we have a lot of things going. Shirley's got a lot of things going, and it'd just be one extra burden. I don't think that that's good at all. So, but all of this has come over the exclusion of the board, basically, and the lack of communication. That's what all this is about, and we can fix that, I'm sure. I'm certain. And, you know, a lot of it was, at the beginning, we were all just responding, I think, frantically. And so, you know, just like everybody else, CalFire was doing it, our police was doing it, and our first responders were doing it. You know, I talked to a couple of the deputy sheriffs that were trying to keep logs as they were going out and evacuating people, and it was almost, it was impossible for them to do that because they were going from one to the next, to the next, to the next, to the next, and in a very emergency fashion. And so the fire was a crazy thing. You know, talk to, talk to CalFire Chief White, and he'll tell you that he has only experienced one other like it, and that was the Rim Fire. And in the Rim Fire, it didn't, only had 30 structures. It didn't have the amount of damage that it had here. This is, so this is, you know, a very big deal for anybody. So moving forward, I'm sure that we can, we can work something out. I think that as we get into a stage where Shirley doesn't have, like, four jobs, you know, then we can come back to this later and we'll, and we can update it and discuss it, is my opinion on what we should do. I don't want to put any more burden on anybody else than we have to. I'm looking at Jeff, I mean, that guy's moving in, not Jeff Grovitz. He's trying to move in, like, five different directions at one time. You know, when I saw Stacy at the Burson Church, she was in full swing, just as Sherry Ruch was at Corybound, and LJ was at Good Sam. They were in full swing for about four days. And then after the four days, they've taken on their regular life and this other life, plus their, all their other duties, all at one time. And I told Stacy, I said, you need to think about downsizing, the next step. And because, because I knew that, that she was going to run out of resources, number one, for help, and number two, she's going to burn herself out. And so I imagine the past week and a half or so, she's been burnt out, or two weeks, just like a lot of people have. Well, so in my mind, what we should try to do from this point forward is to, or try to minimize that on our, on our staff and our employees, because I could see it. I could see it in them. And I, you know, that's, to me, that's a dangerous situation. I don't want nobody to get hurt, and I don't want anybody to start feeling like, you know, I felt that way. I got, I got it that way myself. And that's not a comfortable feeling, so. So that's, I guess that's, I've heard what I need to hear. We have, if we were to take a road, and we were standing at the fork of the road, we would have to take three different roads at one time. And so I think that we need to take that on a little later. How do you guys feel about it?
I really feel that we need to go back and correct some of the things that haven't been done in the past and come up to speed. This is 2015, not 1975, or not 1996. I'm not saying things are broken to the point where they can't be fixed. I too agree, being integral part of that, that the MAC worked and worked well. I wouldn't look at changing anything in that. I would, I would like to clarify some of the things that is in the gray areas, so we have a plan to go forward. And I think the only way we're going to be able to do that is see what we did in the past, in the near past, in the far past, see those mistakes, and get the solutions for them. Instead of pointing fingers, just get the solutions for them. I would hope that, and I know we've talked about it a little bit, doing a debrief or a recap of how this entire incident went in different phases. I know we're going to be in recovery phase for two to five years, maybe even longer. But I think we can handle the immediate incident problems. We can take a look at that, find out what did work and what didn't work, find out if we need to put other procedures in place, more resources, or even different people in places. Because right now, people have changed. I worked with Captain Hawkins in the Sheriff's Department. I think he's an individual that, he's a sharp guy, but he's wore so many hats now. Now he wears another hat. Unfortunately, we find out people quit wearing hats, and they actually retire, and they go play golf, or go do something. And then again, we're scrambling, looking for someone like Mr. Hawkins, or someone like, that thinks like him, or has the same qualities, the same assets, and maybe we hold that bar a little bit too high. Maybe we could start training somebody for that position five years before. That's my personal feeling on it. I don't think the system is broken. I think it does need some fixing.
Anybody else? Public? Okay. We're good? We're good? Are you guys good? Good job.
Going to report out next time?
When is the next time?
Reporting out. We're reporting out.
Oh, great. Really? I make a motion, we adjourn.
Actually, I think I have something I need to talk to the board about.
Let's just report out.
Reporting out.
Okay. Who wants to report out first?
I'll go. I have nothing to report.
Cool. Next?
I don't have anything I want to say that was laid out.
Okay. Mike?
Just a couple of quick ones, I'm sorry about that, Supervisor Kearney. Yesterday, we did spend some time with Ed Lark and the public access TV crew. We got some file footage of some video that we plan on putting into an informational video that'll be produced by PATV. We are getting some file footage for that. I think it'll be a very informative video that we could play on PATV and also make that available to anybody that would want that, such as our building department to play while people are waiting in, in the area or something of that. So, it's all volunteer work, there's no cost to it, and I think it's a very good project. I will be attending several meetings this week, I won't take the time to go into them, dealing with the community in District 3. And I will be attending some very charitable organization events, raising funds for the folks in our county. That's all I have.
Did you want to mention skateboarding?
Sorry, what? Oh, oh, well, I did, I did want to mention that, I'm, I'm sorry. About 10 months ago, I was approached by a young man in District 3. His name was Goose, and avid skateboarder, and he had a group of folks up there that liked skateboarding. We've had a little problem up there with skateboarding in commercial areas and park, markets and things like that. He approached me with an idea to put a skateboard park somewhere up in the Arnold area, or somewhere in that District 3 area, and he was very, very, very serious about doing it. He actually collected signatures and raised donations for materials and things, putting the cart way before the horse. The only problem we had with that is we didn't have any property. I was searching that for county property that we could look on. Unfortunately, Goose was killed in an auto accident this last week. He was one of the three individuals involved in that accident on Highway 4. I've been contacted by his friends and his committee, and I would like to see that project go. So I will be coming back to the board and to the county, see if we've got the property. Thank you.
I attended a EMS meeting last Wednesday, and a part of that meeting was a review of kind of the medical system and evacuation plan for the county as a result of the fire. And they made a report, and I'll be passing that on to the admin office to possibly have that represented here at this particular meeting on one of our Butte fire updates. It was very interesting and very informative of how the medical end of the system pulled together in regards to supporting our residents. We have a IHSS meeting next Monday at 10 o'clock. Typically, it's held at the Cal Works Building, it's being held at the Senior Center due to space. We have the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting next Monday as well. Location is being changed from Sonora to Jackson. The COG will be meeting on the first Wednesday of the month. We did vote to move our meetings to an earlier time. I believe we'll be starting at the 5 o'clock, 5:30 hour versus the 6:30 hour. And we are, we continue to be down our one community member, and that subject will be coming back to this board next week, I guess, or the week after, soon, 27th of, of October next week. And then I'll be attending, the library folks are having a kind of farewell luncheon for Maury, and I'll be attending that this week as well. Our librarian is retiring after many years of service to our community. That's all I have.
What day is that?
I'm not quite sure. I'd have to look, I just know it's this week.
We'll change to Jackson.
Yes, there's an email.
Let's see, I didn't think of it, though, you go ahead.
Actually, I wanted to, I have two things that I wanted to mention. One is that in July, I registered for the CAO conference that's taking place this week. And while I was back and forth in the recent weeks about attending, I have decided to go ahead and attend that because it is paid for and because it will be an opportunity to meet with other CAOs, most specifically Lake County and, and some of the other counties that have undergone disasters. So I will be gone tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. Brian Moss will be here. In Actium, I said, I will be following up with emails as time allows, as time allows while I'm gone. The other thing I wanted to talk to the board about is, prior to the fire, the Spirit Committee, which is a self-form committee of county employees, had come to me about resurrecting our Halloween celebration, and one of the things they wanted to do was do a haunted house for employees and their families in the old jail. And they've been working and preparing for that. I, I'm been a little bit on the fence of whether, because I've heard both, we should go forward with it, we should cancel it, and I want to be very sensitive to and respect what has happened in our county and the people who have lost their homes. On the other hand, our employees have been working very, very hard, they've been working a lot of long hours, they, they have been, and oftentimes dealing with, they were evacuated through the fire, they've lost homes in the fire, and I think this is something that would really help as a stress reliever, support morale. My question is to the board, what are your feelings?
I would say yes.
Whatever the employees want. If they want to do it, that's great.
Does that mean I still have to go into the jail?
Yeah, and at least until you get bailed out, Supervisor Olivera.
Well, right about now, I may not ever get bailed out, so.
I said no on the jail, because these guys snuffed me on jumping the frogs. I thought I'd get them back on that one. I want to say, is it on October 31st they're doing this?
It's actually October 30th.
Okay.
Well, traditionally, the Halloween celebration has been, prizes awarded for best office decorations, best group decoration, best individual decoration. We also have the Stone Soup Award, which is raising money and/or canned goods for the food bank. The cost to get into the haunted house is a donation to the food bank, either through cans or a check, no cash please, employees. And it, it usually will do something during the lunch hour, and then as people have breaks, they will go over to the jail between 2:00 and 4:00 to do the tour of the jail, and there'll be funneling groups of, I think it's either six or eight through the haunted house at that, during that time.
Reason why I brought that up, on October 31st in Abidore County, there is a pancake breakfast that's being put on for our benefit. And this, at 5:00 to 10:00 this Thursday at Kennedy Mine in Abidore County, there's also a benefit being put on, and I think Rich Hoffman, our illustrious fellow from the Rancho Ria, he's hosting that on behalf of our fire victims too, so that's why I asked you about the 31st.
Right, no, it, it won't be on Friday, the 30th.
Could you send me an email on the 31st? No, but thanks for asking. Okay. I'm gonna make it to the jail.
I have nothing to report.
So, I'll be attending that event on the 22nd, and it's from 5:00 until 10:00. From what I see, it looks like it's gonna be a pretty good event, it's supposed to, it's supposed, I think it's free of charge, you don't have to pay to get in, so it's just a donation thing. And it's supposed to benefit, you know, our folks too. So it's pretty, I think it's pretty neat that folks from across the river, from Rice and there's been quite a few groups that have actually reached out in support, including the, don't they have a foundation over there as well, surely, that, if I remember right, isn't it?
22nd is put on by the Amber Community Foundation.
Yeah, so they have the Abidore Community Foundation as well, it's been doing things to raise money to help us deal with, our, our folks deal with their catastrophe here too, so. A lot of, a lot of good things happened here too, a lot of bad things, but I guess what's important is how we move forward with it and, and how we deal with it. I think we have all the right stuff in this county to, to work it out. We've got great people here, so we can do it. All right, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for attending.
Second coming, folks.